Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and good evening. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, and OCEAN Channel 13. It will also be rebroadcast at a later date. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our staff member Lena Pavex in the main hallway. Sign up for public comment this evening. It will close at 6:30 PM. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues in the committee and Superintendent Chang to join us on the floor for several presentations we have to make. Great. So, hello. Tonight, we're proud to honor schools that have earned accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young Children, also known as N-A-E-Y-C, or pronounced as NAEC. To earn this accreditation, schools must meet high-end, rigorous standards agreed upon by experts in the field of early education, early childhood education. It's quite an accomplishment, and tonight, we honor four BPS schools that have reached this high standard during the 2016-2017 school year. So, I'd like to read one citation, and then we'll call up each principal and school in order. The first is, "The David A. Ellis Elementary School with Cynthia Jacobs-Tolbert Principal." So, the Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to the David A. Ellis Elementary School, Cynthia Jacobs-Tolbert Principal, upon earning accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young People. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent's schools and congratulate the school's principal, teachers, and staff for their commitment to providing young children and families in Boston with the highest-quality early childhood education. Please stay up here as well, okay? Thank you. And the next is the Harvard Kent Elementary School, Jason Gallagher Principal. Is Jason here? Please note, Jason couldn't make it, okay? The next is the Martin Luther King Jr. K-8 School with Keita Pottinger Principal. Bought the team with you, great. Do you want to make sure, then, to introduce the team members as well?
Yes, we would. We have two team members with us today, Laura Worth, early childhood teacher, and Rakim Pinkney, early childhood paraprofessional, and they did all the work to make this happen.
And last is the Donna McKay K-8 School, Jordan Weimar Principal. Okay, I don't see Jordan here as well. Great, so congratulations. Superintendent, do you have a couple of words about what this process means?
Actually, Jason, you want to say a few words? I'll just say that we should be proud that we have the nation's best early childhood education program in the country, and thank you for all your work. I know that the bar is very, very high to get this accreditation, so congratulations.
The only thing that I would add is that this is voluntary, and so these schools are volunteering to put themselves up to this high bar, and it takes about three years and a ton, a ton, a ton, a ton of work, but we know our children benefit. And today, I was at two celebrations, and the kids were there, and the families were there, and it means a lot to the schools and the families, so thank you.
And I would also say, we do have one school community member who happens to be a specialist in this topic, so I'm not sure if Ms. Robinson would like to make a few comments as well.
I want to thank Jason and his team, but also the district for doing N-A-E-Y-C accreditation. This is something that's usually done in preschools, and it's heavy lifting for public schools to be able to do this work because a lot of the facility issues particularly aren't as welcoming to young children as they need to be, and so therefore, there's a lot of work that the district really has to do to commit to doing this, and we thank you, and it's great work.
You want to come on over? Come on over, come on over here in front. Come on over in front, yep. The committee would also like to recognize a group of students who recently won an essay contest sponsored by local philanthropist Don Rodman. So, come on up, students. So, this spring, four BPS high schools participated in a book discussion and essay competition about Rodman's Ride and Other Stories Given. Fourteen juniors were selected as competition winners and have become a student philanthropic entity where they are working together to manage a generous $25,000 grant from Don Rodman, who is with us this evening. Mr. Rodman, would you come up and join us as well, please, sir? So, similar to how Mr. Rodman impacted his community through his generosity, the student philanthropic entity will impact their communities through this $25,000 grant. So, the superintendent is handing out the certificates of commendation, but I just want to quickly, why don't I actually hand it to each of the students? If you could say your name and the school you're from?
Is that okay?
Okay. My name is Agnes Yagoji, and I go to the John D. O'Brien.
My name is Linhun Yan, I go to the John D. O'Brien.
My name is Kimberlin Jones, and I go to the John D. O'Brien.
My name's Eliza Hall, and I go to EMK.
My name's Alicia Prentice, and I go to O'Brien.
My name is Jean Devry-Pierre-Louis, go to Urban Science Academy.
My name is Uyin Chu, and I go to the John D. O'Brien.
My name is An Nguyen, and I also go to the John D. O'Brien.
And would someone like to describe what the decision you've come to as a group on how you're going to manage this $25,000 grant?
So, we basically decided to create a club in each of our schools, the O'Brien, Urban Science Academy, EMK, and the Burke, called, well, we're still deciding the name, but basically, we kind of created a safe space for teens to voice their opinions and their ideas without getting judged or ostracized. We will have events about like, once every month, called #SpeakOutNight, where we have poetry, art, spoken word, where we get to talk about what's happening in our community and how to end stereotypes in our community, for example, how to clean up our community, and we have volunteering events.
And hopefully, with this club, it will give the students a platform to not only voice their opinions on things that are going on within the schools, within the communities, but also showcase their talents and just like their passion for cleaning up what's wrong in the communities.
Excellent, thank you very much. And Mr. Rodman, I just want to ask, is this what your goal was when you set out for something like this, or do you have a comment on this?
First, I'd like to thank McKibben and his staff for their fine work. Let's put it this way here, before coming to Boston Public Schools, I visit about a dozen suburban schools, and to be honest with you, for someone like myself to go in there, they do not have an open mind to any ideas, but as soon as I talked to McKibben, it was like, let's walk into it and see if it has any merit. And all I can say is, my goal here was to inspire people to give back, but I'm going to tell you something, these amazing kids, they inspired me more than I inspired them. I think I could have been under this deal, to be honest with you. Thank you.
And Superintendent, do you have any comments about this?
I just had an opportunity to meet some of them earlier today, so super impressed. I'm looking forward to what you guys will be able to do for your school communities. I'm looking forward to seeing this all in action next year.
Great, thanks, and we'll just take a quick picture together. Great, thank you very much. We'll move on now to the approval of minutes. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you may access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 7, 2017 school committee meeting as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, just a second. Thank you, Dean Coleman. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes were approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chairman O'Neill. Good evening, school committee members. Today is Happy Summer Salstice. This is another one of my quick mini lessons. Summer salstice is when the Earth's rotational axis is most inclined towards the Sun, at least in terms of the northern hemisphere, and it results in the longest day of the year for us, and it marks the official start of the summer. So, happy summer, everyone. It is a time, this is the time of the year when we are closing out our traditional school year, and we have sent our seniors off wishing them the very, every bit of success in their future endeavors, and we wish the rest of our students a safe and productive summer of learning, of summer jobs, of summer camps, and of summer fun. I want to say a few thank yous. I would like to thank all our hard-working teachers, paraprofessionals, school leaders, secretaries, nurses, custodians, counselors, coaches, central office administrators, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, bus monitors, and everyone that impacts the lives of our young people each and every day. You have all contributed greatly in making this a wonderful school year of success for our young people and giving our youth the opportunity to learn and flourish each and every single day. I'm humbled by your dedication and grateful for your contributions. I want to do a special thank you this year to Barbara Connolly, the Special Assistant to the Superintendent. Barbara has been my Special Assistant since I started as Superintendent of Boston Public Schools, but one thing I like to say about Barbara, she is not loyal to the individual, she is loyal to the role of the Superintendent. She cares deeply about Boston Public Schools, and in her many years serving in Boston Public Schools, she has worked with former superintendents John McDonough, Carol Johnson, Michael Kontopasus, and Tom Pazan. I believe that was a picture from City Year. Barbara will be retiring next Friday after a distinguished 40-year career with BPS. She has been a valuable member of my team, as well as many predecessors. She's kept the trains running on time in the superintendent's office and keeps all of us in line. And if there's one thing she does not do, she does not come to school committee meetings, so she is watching from TV, but she watches from home every single Wednesday evening. So, Barbara, I know you're watching right now. Happy retirement, I know you will not be too far. I want to take a few moments this morning, this evening, to reflect back on this past school year and some of our key accomplishments in the 16-17 school year, and I'm just going to highlight a few achievements. I want to start off by saying, I want to start off by reminding us that we started this school year by launching our Strategic Implementation Plan. The document provides the district with a critical roadmap to drive our work in closing opportunity and achievement gaps, which is our mission, and at its core is defined by the three values of equity, coherence, and innovation. There are five focus areas, 30 initiatives, and these are 30 initiatives we have been working on this year and for the next several years. And I truly believe that the values equity, coherence, and innovation do form the bedrock for transforming the way we educate students in Boston Public Schools. Second highlight from this year, excellence for all. I'm going to talk a little bit about excellence, more on excellence for all later, but I want to remind everybody that this year, we did create more equity at 13 schools where all fourth graders had access to more rigorous instruction, more enrichment, and done in an inclusive way. I'm proud of the innovation and dedication of our principals and our fourth-grade teachers, and I look forward to seeing more success next year as we add fifth grade to all these Excellence for All schools. Third highlight, in an effort to be more innovative, to seek out more innovative approaches to transporting our students, this year, we launched a transportation challenge. Over the two-month-long challenge, we saw the active participation of dozens of universities, tech companies, engaged citizens. Almost every university in the Boston area participated. In early July, we will announce the awardees for each of our two phases, one on improving routing efficiencies and the second on balancing school start times. We look forward to learning from all our solutions as we continue to improve our transportation services. Next highlight, long-term financial planning. Based on a year-long process of collaboration among many members of an advisory committee from across the city, BPS did a deep analysis of the budget with these internal and external experts and published a document called Investing in Student Success, and it's the first report in a long-term financial planning process. The report explores a critical question, what financial choices must be made in BPS to enable the rich academic offerings that Boston students deserve? And the report represents 10 big ideas for possible long-term strategies to unlock dollars and began a citywide conversation about these choices. Build BPS. We launched Build BPS, our 10-year educational facilities master plan that will transform the way we redesign and rebuild our school buildings to be better suited for 21st-century learning. And thanks to a $1 billion investment by Mayor Walsh, with the help of the city and other partners, we created a digital dashboard so that the public can better understand the physical condition of each one of our 125 schools. We've engaged families, community members, and school staff by hosting open houses here at the Bowling Building and a dozen workshops across the city, and we have collected valuable feedback from all our stakeholders. We are pleased at the outcome so far of these workshops, which have generated more than 300 ideas to build, expand, repair, or renovate school buildings. And again, I want to thank the mayor for his investment, his $1 billion investment, and next year, there will be a $13 million immediate investment in every single school for furniture, for other sorts of technology, for technology and other sorts of items that will help transform or move our classrooms more towards 21st-century learning. And one last, actually, sorry, two more highlights. The next one revolves around the theme of how we support the most marginalized in Boston. We reevaluated how we support the at-risk youth in our district, viewing them as true assets. I'm going to take that, I'm going to reword that. We reevaluate how we support the most resilient youth in our city, viewing them as the true assets they are. And to that end, we increased our homeless funding for next year to $1.1 million, adopting a targeted, school-based approach to providing services and supports to 3,000-plus students experiencing homelessness that we have identified, and I think we all believe there are more than that in BPS. We also became a leader as a district in affirming our support for immigrant students and their families and our commitment to providing safe and welcoming schools. This included creating the website BPS, We Dream Together, that offered immigrant students and immigrant families valuable resources and tools and an explanation of their constitutional right to a free and public school education. And we also launched and continue to do our work, I should say, to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline and to reduce chronic absenteeism through the I'm In campaign. And the last highlight, we reshaped our vision in how we deliver food in our schools by putting our customers, that is, our students, first. In particular, we gave them voice in developing and selecting healthier and more appetizing food choices. Our Department of Food and Nutritional Services did this by staging our first annual Cooking Up Challenge, oh, sorry, Cooking Up Change Challenge, where student chefs prepared meals using our nutritional guidelines and current per pupil budget of $1.43, and I believe this school committee had the opportunity to taste a chicken fajita tostada bowl with grilled veggies and banana bites, and that item will appear on our menu next year. FNS also conducted over 25 mini food shows across the district, collecting feedback from 5,000 students on over 20 different food items. This input is critical since we now require a 75% student approval rating before placing a dish on a future menu. We also had 1,700 students participate in taste tests of meals prepared by the companies who submitted bids to become next year's pre-plated food vendor. And lastly, we launched Hub and Spoke, a pilot program in East Boston that aims to give more students access to freshly-prepared foods by having a school with a full-service kitchen centrally make the meals and distribute them to nearby schools. So, we've done a lot this year. Those are just some of the highlights, but I thought it was appropriate before June 30 to highlight some of the most important things that we have accomplished this school year. A couple of bright spots to share, and I want to start off with the Nickelodeon's Worldwide Day of Play, and there's going to be a video that's coming up, so keep a close eye on the screen. On Monday, June 12, we teamed up with Nickelodeon and our partners, Playworks, to host Worldwide Day of Play for students at the Mata Hunt Elementary School. It might have been a hot, muggy day, but you would have never known it by the smiles on the young people's faces. They got to go through a really fun obstacle course before lining up for the grand finale, the slime tank. While students all doned plastic ponchos before getting doused with green goo, there's a very special person there that you see who bravely scrapped the protective gear and went all in. You can, that's a shortened version, you can see the longer version online on YouTube, but Principal Walter Henderson won some major points from students, and the students were thrilled to see their fearless school leaders completely covered in slime, and he was running around trying to hug all the students after that. I avoided that slime tank. Next bright spot, last Thursday, Mayor Walsh, Chairman O'Neill, and school committee member Alex Oliver-Davila joined me at the Harvard Kent for the launch of our fifth quarter of learning, a new initiative that envisions traditional summer school. We are taking 2,200 high-need students out of the classroom and engage them in exciting enrichment programs to inspire real-world learning. This innovative approach blends rigorous academic learning with hands-on activities like sailing, archery, salsa dancing, and tennis. Students learn critical thinking, perseverance, and teamwork skills. Yeah, that was from a few years ago, on the 10th court. This new initiative built on the success of our network of 110 summer learning programs, which now enrolls more than 10,000 students each summer, bringing the total to 12,000 students overall in summer learning. So, very excited to see all the kids that will be engaged in summer learning this year. Research shows that year-long learning has tremendous benefits in stopping the summer sly, and that's why we reallocated our $2 million summer budget to this effort. As the mayor said, we realize that students' education shouldn't stop at the end of the year when the fourth quarter of learning closes. To make sure our students don't fall behind, they must learn year-round, and that's why we call this the fifth quarter. I want to thank our partners, particularly Boston After School and Beyond, in helping to support the programming at 31 schools and community sites. I want to also thank Meadow Movements for leading us in some salsa dancing. I think there's a horrible video of me trying to salsa dance as well. I told them not to show that video. Yes, I believe Alex is also dancing. Something like that. Yay, and there we go.
Superintendent, I think it's going to be marked as a needs improvement in the implementation on this one.
The full video of that is not on YouTube. The next bright spot, on Monday, this past Monday, 13 schools that launched Excellence for All this year were part of a capstone project showcase here at the Bowling Building. Over 150 students shared their work, their culminating activity, with parents, teachers, school leaders, and central office staff, including me. I want to thank school committee member Jerry Robinson for attending. Students demonstrated learning by applying problem-solving skills to real-world challenges such as designing a classroom that best supports inclusion. I believe that was a Mendel School that did that. They also shared and celebrated their cultural identities through an interdisciplinary project entitled "I Am Descended from Greatness" and showed off their creativity with an interpretive dance version of Paul Revere's Ride. Other students shared what they learned about voting rights using large annotated drawings of current elected officials to showcase, celebrate, and end the first year of Excellence for All, and was a proof point demonstrating that all BPS fourth graders are capable of doing high and rigorous work when given the opportunity to demonstrate their ability to learn in authentic ways. So, I want to thank all those who have been involved in making sure that this initiative got kicked off this year, and look forward to the work with Excellence for All next year. Next bright spot, yesterday, there was a groundbreaking at the LEKA Innovation Upper School, when completed in fall of 2019. The school features state-of-the-art spaces designed to promote collaborative learning as well as an art studio and robotic engineering lab all overlooking the Charles River. One of the cool features will be windows that will project outwards from the exterior, forming learning nooks where students can solve problems together. The two-year construction project is the final phase of an overall $43 million project that will create a three-campus Elliott School. And this school has, and I want to thank the city for their investment, for the renovations in all three of these buildings. Elliott School represents the $1 billion we're investing in BPS buildings over the next 10 years, so I'm proud that as a city, we're making these type of investments to ensure our students are truly 21st-century learners. Next bright spot, yesterday, we partnered with Liberty Mutual Insurance to hold our first-ever youth homelessness prevention forum. The event drew attention to the district's deep work in preventing youth homelessness and the supports we offer to approximately 3,000 students experiencing homelessness. Liberty Mutual and the BPS Office of External Affairs developed this forum in partnership with community organizations such as with community organizations such as Youth Harbors, Bridge Over Troubled Waters, and Y2Y. And the purpose of the form was to connect schools directly with local organizations and young people who are experiencing housing instability, and so the young people know the type of services that they can get. And in order for our students to perform better in school, we know their social-emotional needs need to be met, and we are committed to making sure we're getting these services to our young people. Earlier today, we unveiled a new partnership in BPS. It's titled Becoming a Mam, Becoming a Man, otherwise known as BAM for short. We are very excited about this opportunity because BAM is a nationally-recognized organization with a proven track record of successfully mentoring young people by providing school-based counseling and mentorship services. Founded in Chicago, 2001, by Youth Guidance, BAM teaches valuable life skills to young men of color. Boston is the first city that they have expanded to, starting in Chicago in 2001, and Boston's the first city they are reaching outside of Chicago. We are very pleased to share that this fall, BAM will serve 150 young men in four BPS schools: the Jeremiah E. Burke, Dearborn Stem Academy, the English High School, and the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science. I want to thank Dr. McKibben McCray, Shawn Brown, the Executive Director of BAM Boston, Thaddeus Miles, Conan Harris, Ron Dorsey, and the mayor, of course, for helping launch this organization here in Boston. And the last bright spot, earlier today, Green, Boston Green Academy celebrated not only one, but two ribbon-cutting ceremonies. First was a ceremony on launch of BGA's newly renovated library. The library design was a product of a participatory community design process. We want to thank Jensler Architects and Turner Construction for this library makeover. And then the second ribbon-cutting marked the redesign of a room at BGA to support some of the school's students with special needs. This newly-created space features kitchen and laundry facilities where students can learn important life skills. And those are some, that's a picture of the renovated room. And those are some of the highlights over the last two weeks. I want to thank you for your attention, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Any questions? Any questions or discussion? Ms. Oliver-Davila.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all those bright spots. I just wanted to also say I know a lot of the school committee members, everybody, went to different graduations, and I just really wanted to say that it was very moving going to the graduations, especially a few of them where we have some students that have faced some major challenges in life, and just want to say I'm really proud to be in a district where we have schools that give young people second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh million chance, so thank you for that. And then I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our High School of Teacher Program, which was highlighted in the Daily Orange. It's an article regarding the next workforce, and that we need more young people of color to enter the teaching workforce, and so we were quoting that, and I'll just say again, I think it's a great program, and I'm excited that we'll be taking it to some other levels so that those students can come back into our schools, and we're really creating that pipeline, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver-Davila. Ms. Robinson, do you have something?
I just wanted to say that I was quite pleased with the Excellence for All program that I saw on Tuesday, was it Monday?
Monday.
Monday afternoon. It was amazing that these were 4th graders. You would have not, if you did not know that, when you watch them, the maturity, the seriousness, and the level of devotion to the projects, and the support of one another, was really a testament to the work that all of those teachers have done, and it really shows us that, what our kids can do when we are giving them the kinds of support. So, I'm looking forward to seeing this grow in the district, and, you know, watch out to see what these guys are going to do next year as 5th graders. It's just amazing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the Superintendent on his report? I just wanted to, Superintendent, also mention that the Boston Teachers Union had a turnover this week, and four BTU officers are retiring, including the president, Mr. Richard Studman, along with the other officers, Patrick Conley, James Johnson, and Josephina Lascano, and we will be honoring them at a meeting in September, but Mr. Studman is traveling this week and is unable to make the July meeting, so we do congratulate him. We've had a long partnership with the Boston Teachers Union and that team, and we congratulate them on their retirement, and we also congratulate Jessica Tang, the new president-elect of the Boston Teachers Union, and the new offices it will be serving with President-elect Tang as well, and we look forward to working with them. And then, Ms. Oliver-Davila, thank you for bringing that up about graduation, because I like to say this is the most wonderful time of the year, right? We love, we all attended a number of graduations. Through the back surgery I had, I could only make one week of graduations instead of two, but they were still wonderful, and I agree completely with your comment. Among other schools, I was at McKinley Prep and McKinley Academy, and you're absolutely right that what this district does for all of our students and making sure we have a portfolio of options available, so that we have the right school for our students that may not fit for one school, but that we have a range of options available is critical. And so, thank you for putting that out, pointing that out, and I agree completely. And I thank my fellow members for their support, no pun intended, while I was recovering from surgery, and thank you for the kind note you send me, and it can be forwarded if people want to see it, but there was no policy discussion, but thank you, everyone. So, if there are no other questions or comments on the Superintendent's report, I'll entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report as presented. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto, was there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the Superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. Move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent, excuse me, but are referred to the committee for later discussion. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining, and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have four speakers this evening, and we'll begin with Jennifer Boyd-Hurley, and she'll be followed by John Mudd.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jen Hurley. I'm just a parent, and I have a 7th grader and a 4th grader, and Dr. Chang, you'll be happy to hear, my 7th grader, who chose Boston Latin Academy, says the food is great. I'm here to talk about an underappreciated issue, which is assignment. I have been following this issue since 2008, when my daughter was assigned to a school that ended up having a waitlist. So, we had three zones back then, for those with some non-historical knowledge, and huge waitlists at several of the schools. So, we advocated for more classrooms, and then came a discussion on many a weekend, the home-based A model. I think there were 24, so that's what I call it. I guess it's now the home-based model. And what that was, was to decrease zone size by allowing schools to stretch, by, or allowing a student by their home address to stretch only so far, and including only so many schools so it would be equitable, other areas that didn't have the same schools. It's a great premise. It really is, and it was working for a few years, I think, pretty well, and I was able to talk about it, and I recommended it, and I tried to sell it over in my area of Charlestown and West End and Back Bay. It wasn't perfect, but it allowed for three waitlists for people that were holding on hope to having a spot somewhere. So, imagine my surprise when this year I learned that there were some changes to BPS assignment that I, who actually get and read the agenda for the school committee meetings, had no knowledge of. It was, in fact, that they were going to reduce, force a reduced waitlist to one school, and it allowed other people, however, to put on as many waitlists as they want, but for those non-assigned people especially, it's troubling to me. The other thing is, I'm trying to understand if this represents a bigger issue. Is home-based A model not feasible? We have the highest percentage of people in the districts that want to go to the smallest amount of schools, and that's because the schools in those districts are very good, so you're going to have high numbers, high waitlists. How are we going to fix it? I'm not sure, but I think we have to open a dialogue here. What I don't like is adding something that they're calling option schools to lists that weren't on there when parents went to look at their choices in the fall. Apparently, and I'll defer, because I would love this to be a bigger discussion, these are under-enrolled schools probably, they're larger, but they're farther. So, what are we doing? We're going to break the model that we were trying to create, which was reducing the size, and as I recall, decreasing busing costs of almost $100 million.
20 seconds.
Wasn't that the point? The other thing is, how are we going to have an open dialogue with BRA and BPA? We need to do something about a robust understanding as we put more students, more potential kids into these areas without increasing the zone, such as the One Charlestown Project. How are we going to drop 1,000 extra units with no extra space? The same thing's happening in South Boston, so what we need to do, what I'm asking for, is not an open dialogue. I want some community involvement, I want some transparency. How are we going to take care of those kids and keep it equitable for the people that live there? So, those are the issues that I raise as an unpaid, unappreciated parent on this issue that most people don't talk about, because you're only at these meetings usually if you're here, and my kids are in school. I have no dog in this fight, which is why I fight as hard as I do, because it needs to be fair. And if it's not working, let's talk about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. I'm going to actually ask Chief of Staff, Mr. Consalvo, to speak with you afterwards, if that's okay. Mr. Consalvo, would you? Thank you.
You have my email.
Thank you, Ms., he's over here in the back corner. Great, thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Mudd, we'll hear from Victor Alvarado and Elmer Freeman.
Good evening. At the last meeting, there was no public comment on reports, and since perhaps uniquely I had something very nice to say, I thought I might repeat tonight what I thought I would try to say last time. There was a report on the Global Education Program at the last meeting, and as part of that report, there was testimony from, and I'll screw it up, Ariana Dixon Ortiz about her trip to Cuba, and she was extremely eloquent and really extraordinarily moving. Many of us were very, and I'm sure all of you who are here, and I'm sorry, maybe you saw it on TV, Mr. Chair, but it was really very stirring testimony. It talked about the human impact on her as a rising artist, and I can't tell you how much it affected many of us. I think that those reports, I would hope in the future, could not only talk about, you know, targets of where they're going and the dollar value of what it's costing, but also the human and educational impact of these trips. I'm sure that they are extremely important for gringos like me and are key to some of the helping develop culturally and linguistically sustaining practices that the Superintendent and the school committee strongly back. I would just add one thought, and that is, I think there may be places in this country that people may want to look at. I know that when Mariama White Hammond was at Project Hip Hop, she took trips to the South so that students could see the civil rights movement and its locations. I'm sure that for Latinos, I mean, I don't know, and other linguistic groups, one thinks of Cesar Chavez, but there may be other better examples that are more feasible. So, I just wanted to say thanks to the people who manage the program, and thanks to you for supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Victor Alvarado, and he'll be followed by Elmer Freeman.
Hello. My name is Victor Alvarado. I am a sophomore at the John D. O'Brien High School, and I am also part of the Young Men's Advisory at Sociedad Latina. So, today, I'm basically going to be speaking about my experience in Boston Public Schools. My high school experience has been really, really good, but my middle school experience, I felt was unfair, especially towards students of color. I felt that my middle school was more like a prison instead of a place of education. They separated students, like, put in a smarter students into advanced work classes, and then they basically put what they would call the bad kids in just regular classes, and they just basically treated the advanced students a lot better compared to the rest of the students. And basically, when it came to punishments, you know, when you did something wrong, they'll punish you, suspension, I felt like they were tougher on students that weren't on the advanced work class, like, I felt like they were just more tougher, more strict. And basically, I felt like they would target specific students, like, let's say if, like, the school police would come, and sometimes they would search the lockers for weapons or anything, and I felt like they always took out a specific group of students, always, instead of checking the entire school, which I would expect for them to do, but instead they just took out a specific group of students. And also, like, for a lot of situations that the teachers wouldn't know who was involved, they would always just assume the same group of students to be involved in the same bad situation. And we do not agree to the advanced work class at all, and it was, I felt like it was kind of the reason why I had a bad experience, because I felt like if all the students were just challenged all the same, instead of just being put into separated classes, I felt like it'd just be better. Everybody would be treated the same. Instead of the advanced work classes, they got treated better, you know, they kind of let them slide when it came to certain things. And we have some recommendations for Boston Public Schools to strongly consider. One would be to enforce the code of conduct for teacher interaction with students. Two would be to have students be part of the teacher hiring and training processes. Three would be to create a curriculum that reflects the students' culture and diversity. Also, I would like to say that we support the work that Dr. Tommy Chang is doing around, aiming to have students achieve excellence in BPS. We look forward to working more with BPS to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elmer Freeman. That concludes our speakers, Mr. O'Neill.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Alvarado, do you happen to have a, sir, is that, do you have a written copy of your remarks? Do you happen to have a written copy of your remarks? If you don't mind giving it to Ms. Sullivan, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Our first action and item this evening is grants for approval totaling $7,58,687. This time, I opened up to any questions or discussions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just had a brief question about the reimbursable item that's on the list. If somebody could speak a little bit more to what...
Yeah, actually, I was going to suggest that. Great point, because it is a fairly large dollar item, and it is a slightly new process, so, oh, thank you, okay?
Yeah, a new one coming.
Excellent, welcome.
You just want me to explain the...
Sure, if you could explain what it is and what the process is and why it is on here as a grant for approval. It is totaling, as I recall, $5 million and change, but it's a series of grants together. It's a process you put in place. Do you mind explaining it in more detail, please? Thank you.
So, about two years ago, we set up this process where, in order to actively kind of manage and track any external commitments we get from any funders for positions or stipends. So, for example, if a school gets a commitment letter from the Bar Foundation to fund an elementary specialist position, they would give us a commitment letter committing to pay for this position for the year. So, we set up this specific grant in order to be able to track that commitment. So, we'd set up the funding, we'd set up a budget with no revenue yet, so kind of front-loading the money to pay for the position, and then invoicing the Bar Foundation at the end of the year for that salary. So, the total commitments, based on the letters that we have received so far for commitments for FY '18 across not just schools but departments as well, is about $5.5 million so far.
Understood, thank you. So, this is all the grants that we have received, letters, firm letters of commitment to date to be reimbursed.
Correct.
But this is authorizing for the payments to go out, subject to reimbursement from the letters of commitment that we have.
Correct.
Across a number of schools, a number of grants, a number of providers totaling $5 million plus.
Yes.
Is that clear, Mr. LaCanto? Thanks, or if any other members had questions on it. And this is, what, the second year we've done it this way?
Yes, it's the second year. Yes, it's the second year. F Y eighteen will be the third year, actually.
This will be the third year coming up. Okay. And did you have a question? Dean Coleman?
Another question.
Okay, great. Do you have another question? Go ahead.
Yes, you know, as you know, this is great. It's great to see a big package. But I just want to just repeat that the M in SMART goals is measurable, and there's still a lot of just process-oriented goals that these are happening. We don't know what they're going to be outcomes. And then I'll go back and give a more detailed commentary, which I'll share with you and the superintendent later. But I think it's important for us to track some of this, to know, is it really driving improvement in these critical areas? And so many of them are about reducing the achievement gap in terms of, as we move forward with the opportunity, achieving task force work, to get this really measurable and be able to track what's working, what's not working, is really important for us.
Yes.
It's great work, but more specificity.
Yes. So we definitely, we work with each program manager to make sure they have very SMART goals in place. I know some of them may end up being a little lacking. But in September, we plan to come back to the committee with a grant outcomes report, like similar to what we did last year as well, so tracking all these SMART goals for all the grants that end in F Y seventeen.
We hear you on the M, the measurable. Be more quantitative, so.
You know, I mean, it's relative to the achievement opportunity task forces that we're putting together SMART goals around the policy. It's something that systematically is not as strong as we would like.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Any other questions or comments regarding the grants? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
I just have a question about the Community Adult Learning Centers Grant and the E D I C Family Literacy. They're two small grants, but included in it are a number of external partners, but there was no definition of what the external partners were doing in those grants, I could surmise, but...
So I think Maria Harris is here. Maria's here. She could be actually answered better.
Good evening. Maria Harris, I'm the Director of Adult Education. You'll notice that we use a lot of collaborative relationships across the community to provide additional services to our students. So in some of them, you'll see Open Air or Tech Goes Home. Those are the partners that would support us in doing the computer literacy programming, where our parents actually have a 15-hour sessions on Tech Goes Home, and then they are able to purchase those. Our other partners would be related to the career pathway. For example, we have the Certified Nurses Assistant Program. So we partner with Stony Hedge or Laurel Ridge Rehabilitation Center so that they can give us space, time, to do the clinicals for that. So was there a specific partner that you wanted to know more about?
Well, I saw that several of the museums, the England Aquarium, et cetera, and I wasn't sure what kind of field trips or what the level of field trips were.
We're a family literacy center, the Adult Learning Center. Actually, the Department of Adult Education is a department within B P S that provides academic programs for parents. So our parents are enrolled in A B E, Adult Basic Education, E S O L, high school diploma programs, and we also have adult skills training. We model what the school community, what the kids do in schools within our programming. So we integrate those types of things. So we take our parents and their childrens on weekends and holidays. We take them on field trips together to the museums, and we expose them together in accessing the community. So we partner with the zoo. They do field trips to the zoo. We go to the Museum of Art. This year, we went to Docoba. So depending on what our families want to do with their children, we will take them on those field trips. Yeah. And then sometimes they ask us to go without the kids, too.
Right. Thank you.
But all of that is part of our integrated instruction. So all of them is academic-related.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. That'd answer your question. Great. So thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Jay.
And our high school graduation will be Friday, the 23rd, so you'll be able to see your adult graduates.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Jay, and you as well. So any other questions or comments on the grants? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
You're moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion, objection? Any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our next action item is revisions to the district wellness policy. We call it our last minute, at our last meeting, Assistant Superintendent of Social Emotional Learning, Emilio Nieves, and Assistant Director of Wellness, Jill Carter, who are both present this evening, proposed revisions to the current policy as recommended by the District Wellness Council. I want to thank Dr. Nieves and Ms. Carter for incorporating the members' feedback into the version that we have before us this evening. The federal government does require that B P S revise its wellness policy by June 30th, therefore, we have the vote before us this evening. So at this time, I invite the superintendent to give any final remarks.
Yes. At our last school committee meeting, Jill Carter and Amali Nieves did provide an update on our district wellness policies. During that meeting, they summarized the changes in our policy, and those are outlined in the memo that you have. At the school committee meeting, you also had some specific questions. All those questions, responses to all those questions and those inquiries are also put into a memo dated on June 15th. Subject line, responses to inquiries regarding revisions to the district wellness policies. If you have any specific questions, Jill Carter and Dr. Amali Nieves are both here. Amali Nieves just finished his doctorate, and so we're calling him Doctor...
Congratulations.
Amali Nieves now. So they are here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Are there any questions or comments with regards to the revised district wellness policy that's in front of us this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised district wellness policy as presented.
You're moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion, objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And before we move on, I do want to, as the superintendent, just say, congratulate Dr. Nieves. And may I ask, sir, though we'll be finding this out in December, we honor all of our new doctorates in Boston Public Schools, may I ask quickly what school and what your dissertation was on?
Nova Southeastern University in South Florida, and the topic was bullying among youth who are perceived to be lesbian, gay, or bisexual.
Thank you, sir. So congratulations, Doctor. Yes, I agree. Move on now to our first report, an update from the English Language Learners Task Force, or an annual update. At this time, I'd like to invite my, our colleague, Dr. Marin Uriarte, co-chair of the English Language Learners Task Force, is going to step forward with the presentation along with her co-chair, I see. Ms. Lee, are you going to join, or are you going to stay up here?
No, I'm going to stay here, but I wanted to...
Do you want to do the introductory remarks?
A little bit.
Excellent. Great. I'm not sure. I think the superintendent may have had some opening comments as well.
If that's okay, just very quickly.
Then we'll hand to you. Is that okay?
Our vision in Boston Public Schools is to provide a culturally and linguistically responsive education with the supports needed to ensure equitable access to opportunities that promote language acquisition, bilingualism, bilinguality, and lifelong learning. We have worked collaboratively with the E L L Task Force to improve instructional programs, how we engage parents, how we do translation services, how we do professional learning in B P S. While there are many issues to work out, I want to thank personally the E L L Task Force for their expertise and their continued partnership in this very important work. One of the implementation-focused areas of our work is to engage students, families, and community organizations as advocates and partners for equity access and results for students. The E L L Task Force has given voice to the community and served as a vital thought partner in this area, particularly as we implement an inclusive, rigorous, and culturally and linguistically sustaining instructional program for E L students, E L students with disabilities, and for all B P S students. We look forward to deepening this partnership for the upcoming school year with the creation of a shared agenda. And now I turn it over to Dr. Uriarte and the members of the E L L Task Force. Thank you for being such a great partner.
Thank you. I, in fact, was going to say, good segue, I just wanted to thank the district. I think it's been a very busy year for the Task Force, and we have really, I think, deepened the relationship between the Task Force and the district along several lines that you will see. And even though sometimes we struggle with vision and how we're going to do things, I think at the end, I think what I've come to understand is that we are very, very lucky to have the leadership that we have in the Boston Public Schools in relationship to this topic and these students. People ask me, how is it to have an E L L, former E L L for superintendent? I said, the greatest thing is that I don't have to explain anything to him. He knows. So we may not always agree, but I think at the end, we understand that we're both pulling in the same direction. So today, Suzanne Lee, who I think is familiar to all of you, will do the presentation for the Task Force. And joining her is Michael Verardino, who's the coordinator of the E L L Task Force. And there are other a couple of members, John Mudd...
Simone.
And Simone. Samuel Utalo in the back. Samuel Utalo in the back were also members of the Task Force, so.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be back to do the annual report. This is dating me. I've been on this Task Force since the formation of the Task Force. I think it's time to step down, to let other people take over. This has been a very busy year because there's a learning curve every time that we have new administration. And since the time that I've been on the Task Force, I would say that this year, because of the new structure that we've put in place, we were able to do a number of things that we were not able to do before. So we're moving forward. And it's a credit to the new administration that have people in place that are working in partnership with the Task Force. So just for a little bit of the background for those who, just a refresher, that the Task Force is put in place to give guidance to the school committee and the district and plan actions, how to address the needs of the E L L learners, and identify mechanisms to address their needs, and monitor the district's progress in addressing the recommendations that we put forward back in 2011. So we've been still working on those recommendations all these years, okay? The number of E L L that we're serving has been increasing every year. Right now, you can see just from the chart itself, almost half of the districts are non, or they come to school, that English is not their native language. So that number is a huge number. Now, some of them might be fluent, that don't need the support anymore, but they were at one time, E L L learners. Somebody helped them to transition. So want to make that point clear, so almost half of our district are students whose backgrounds are non-English speakers, okay? Right now, we still have 31% of the students in the district that are officially coded as E L L, and there are 64 languages in the district. And 21 of all the E L Ls are designated as special needs students, and that's a big number. 21% of E L L. And that's a count for 33% of all SPED students in the district. So you can see why this is an area that's particularly of our focus, because the number is so large. And we'll speak to that, more about that later. We put in a new organization work this year, so the whole Task Force meets every other month. And we have subcommittee for certain focused areas, so allow us to delve deeper into the work. We have five areas, as you can see, the parent engagement, English language learners with disability, student assignment, data, and program quality. And I'm going to speak to each highlights, each one of those areas' accomplishments. And also, this year, we really collaborated with many offices throughout the districts to get to understand how the district works, and that the work is not just Office of English Learner. They cannot be the only one that are working on issues with E L Ls, because they're almost half, 50% of the district. So it has to be the whole district, not just one office. So there's been good attempt to work with the budget office, work with the chief of schools, work with... I keep calling them H R, but it's not H R anymore.
Office of Human Capital.
Office of Human Capital. And so we had many conversations with them, and I think it's still learning in progress, that we don't necessarily have the right information yet. So I'm going to talk more about that, the challenge of working together. And lastly, we spend a lot of time, the Subcommittee on Family Engagement spent a lot of time working on engaging parents and community-based organization throughout the subcommittees, and really delve into how our E L L parents are engaging school. Okay? So those are the goals that were set forth from 2011, and we continue and refine them a little bit. And you notice that these goals are not written in SMART goals, is the way the district now do things, because these were the Task Force goal, not the department goal. So one of the recommendations that we're going to go into later is that we'll spend the summer, and we're working this with the different departments to come up with SMART goals, so that our work is more in sync together, to cut down on some of the frustration that people, the Task Force can set goals, because we have many members that are community members. And when you are not in the working of the district, you often want to think, okay, we want this done. But what is the mechanism to getting that done? We're not the one doing the work. Somebody has to do it, right? So that's a learning curve for everybody to learn. So there's frustration and challenges on the way. So we're going to take those goals, and we work them and see how we can have more attainable SMART goals moving forward, okay? Highlights. I'm going to have to look down here. So the same area that I talked about before. So in the data system, I think, and use of technology, it's been much improved. And I remember a few years ago, when we had to do the D O J report, a lot of the data was done by hand. I mean, this is a few years ago. And now, don't have to do that polling anymore. So it reduces the amount of time to produce the report, and leave more time to really focus on what we should be focusing on, which is quality of instruction. And one of the improved reporting areas is really break down the E L L learners by E L D level, which is the English learning level, and it's much cleaner now. Student assignments, now, we have requested this for a few, since we have the new student assignment plan in place. Because when we first put together the plan, we knew that the impact on E L L students is not something that anybody can put their finger on, because when you shrink the areas of where students can go to school, whereas in the past, we have programs throughout the district, so students would choose to go to those schools, but some of them could be far away from home. So with this new plan, when you're trying to rework that, we don't know what the impact is. Nobody knew. So we've been requesting data, so this is what that is. And we only, right now, I understand that we are in the process of getting some of that data. We don't have it yet, and which is, to us, is a very, we're very anxious, because on the ground, we heard stories, and you see some of the impact on our student learning, that some of them are dispersed through the district. That is not what we want to see happen. But we don't have concrete data to really show that yet, the impact of the student assignments. So I hope that, one of the things that we want to do is really to get that report and get that analysis done. Students, support E L L students with disability. This is another area that would do a lot of focus. And happy to report that there is a person in a position that is jointly working with the OS office and the SPED office. It's the first time we have a position like that, to really focus on E L L students' needs. The E L D level is also included in I E P. In the past, where that is not included, it's hard to talk about what the goal is... In the past, where that is not included, it's hard to talk about, where the goal is not written with the ELD level. It's very hard to measure. And the third piece is the initial analysis of language capacities in the schools. We have a clear picture now, what we need. In the past, when we asked for that, there is no clean data. And in fact, I remember one of the meeting I have with the Office of Capital, that they said, "Well, we don't track that." I said, "Well, how come we don't know what language the teachers speak in the classroom? We have to know that. We don't know that, we can't move forward." So, we are just now beginning to get some of that data. Language capacity is now included in the BPS teacher recruitment marketing materials. So, for the first time, we're putting that forward, it's, I think, is the direct result of some of the work that we've been working on and calling attention to that issue, okay? Program quality. So, one of the highlight, I don't want to read the whole thing, but we, one of the highlight is really help the Kavertian community to identify some of the main issue, that they don't have a pathway because of the new assignment, that the Kavertian students being dispersed throughout the district. And it's been very troubling to see how many Kavertian students that are not in school that they thought that they want to be, because it's not in the area where they live. And as a result, you have program that are not a capacity, but Kavertian students are dispersed in multilingual programs. So, that is not my understanding of what the district's policy is, that we want to support students with the language, but if they are dispersed into multilingual program because of where they live, then we're not able to serve those students. So, it's an area that we're really concerned about. So, we came out with a, not a solution, but a suggestions, how to move forward. And we want to have meetings with the community during the summer, and put out that plan to have more discussion around it, how to have a pathway for Kavertian students go from elementary school to middle school to high school. That is clear. Right now, it's not that clear. There's been courses that's offered by the old ELLs office, and we participated in the zip process and the instructional position paper. So, a lot of our time is spent in giving feedback to what the districts want to do, and with a lens of looking at what's good for ELL students, okay? Improved family community engagement. Now, we have more translation capacity to help parents, and it's the result because of the OS office took on that role of setting up mechanism where there's more translation offer. So, it's still in the process of rolling it out, but at least, we have the capability of serving more families. Not to the extent that we like, but it is more. But we still have a way to go. And they have helped workshops that help families to understand and really access programs in the districts, and understand how things work. And one thing, if you talk about, most of the families that we serve in the district have a hard time understanding how the system works. And think about ELL parents, on top of that, you have a language issue, that they're even more confused. So, with these kind of workshop, I think more parents are at least getting the gist of how the system works, and be able to help their students in that way, okay? So, I want to really focus on the challenges that we met on the way. And I'm not sure that this is something that everybody wants to hear, but we do have challenges.
You need to.
And many of these challenges are ongoing and continuing. I talked about progress that we made on the data collection, but there's still large gap in the data, on the data piece, that we are particularly on that analysis of the home base assignment. And it's something very troubling, that after two, three years, we still don't have a good handle on what the impact of that. And I hope there's something that we can really get to that this year. Incomplete information about language access throughout the district. What I mean by that is that, I don't think, we don't have a good handle on how many teachers we have actually speaks another language, that are they even placed in the right place? Sometime, there is a mismatch. So, you can have a broad, say, we have X number of teachers, but if they're not placed in the right school, working with the right students, then that, having that language, it doesn't make any difference. So, we don't have good data in really how to even talk about it. So, it's something that we're looking forward to, how to get that. And I understand that that also has to do with teacher contract. You cannot force somebody to go somewhere, right? But at least, we know X number of teachers have this kind of language capacity, but are they in the right place? Student assignment and progress integrity, program integrity. Again, it has to do with parents' choice in the assignments, and we have to find ways. So, it's been a big challenge. How do you have that balance? That I know that the new, the neighborhood assignment plan is supposed to fix one area, which is giving parents' choice. So, if you give parents' choice, then ELL parents also need to have that same choice. I'm not so sure that we can do both. So, it's an area for discussion, because what happened with that choice, that when we have students scattered around so many schools, we don't have a concentrations of students that now allow us to do good programming to address their needs. If you have five students in one school, or even ten, you cannot have a teacher to speak that language, to support the students. And we see that the multilingual programs are not as good, cannot do as well as we're having teacher who speak the language. And as far as I'm, my understanding is that our school, my district policy is still that we honor the language. Having language-based program helps students learn. And we have not deviate from that, but in implementation, it's hard to tell sometimes, because our students are spread to so many different schools. The third challenge, taking language into account consistently. What that means is that, when we do assessment, placement, and service delivery, particularly for students with disability, we don't have good ways to assess their, we don't have other languages available. And I know it's difficult. I know how hard it is to find, but after all these years, we don't yet have a good suggestions even how to address it. Because with the largest student body that we have, which is Spanish, we still don't have enough, yeah, enough SPEED teachers or assessors to gauge their level. And a lot of time, because we don't have the capacity, we end up not dealing with the IEP, not dealing with what their language need is. Because if we say in the IEP that they need this kind of language support, then we have to provide it. And it really comes down to, it's gonna become a legal question. If this is their need, and we don't, we're not even attempting to provide it, sooner or later, it's gonna become a liability question. So, we are very concerned about that. And I do understand, being a principal myself, how challenging that is, because even from the small program, like the Chinese-speaking students, across spectrum, there would be many different type of special needs, but because we only have one or two teachers, you tend to put all those students in one type of classroom, but they have different kind of special needs. So, it becomes a dilemma, you know, how do we deal with that? How do we, do you address the special needs, or you address the language? So, it's something that we still need a lot of conversation. And I'm happy to at least see that there are people in the district understand that dilemma, and is really wanting to take on that issue, but it's a big challenge. And the gaps in staffing is something that I alluded to a little bit earlier, that we have these student population needs, but we don't have the right staffing for them. And it's continued not only for the SPEED, but in every SCI program. And there are a lot of school with the multilingual programs that don't have anyone that has the language capacity, that even communicate with parents. So, it is something that the district have to take up, to look at. How many are we talking about? If we don't have good data on that, we can't even address it. In bringing ELL parents' engagement to schools, now, this is a big topic for almost all schools, engaging parents. But for ELL parents, you have another level, another added level of challenge. Not only is language, but culture. So, most of our schools don't have the capacity to address that. There are some few shiny examples, but the majority of the schools don't have that capacity. So, it becomes, in the district, you know, we're really good in planning and passing policies, but we have not been able to scale it up, and take those good example, and consistently implement throughout all the schools. And this is what we've been seeing over and over again, and I think that is something that I know that Superintendent Chang is concerned about, the consistency of how we scale up to provide service for our students. And it's one of the big reasons why I'm still here, because I know that we have shiny examples, that we have done a lot of good things, and we have a good group of people that are working really hard together. But we also have some pretty big challenges that we need to openly, honestly, and discuss, and let people know, well, we can't do it right now. We can only address this. It's better to do it that way than as if we can do it all. I don't think that we can do it all. But at least have some priority. So, hopefully, in the summer, when we come together to develop the SMART goals, we would take a look at that, and how do we develop goals that are realistic, that also provide the district and the community a sense of movement, that we are dealing with the challenge, but not to say yes to everything, because we can't, we can't do it, okay? So, but it's been great work, challenging work. We still have a long way to go, but I think that with the group of people that we have now, we will make it done. Thank you. So, I want to open for question, and I think we have new members of the ELL Task Force that you would like to.
Yeah, can I?
Yes, please.
Yes, we, basically, what we're asking, you know, once people clarify whatever questions they may have, is first of all, the reauthorization of the task force. We're asking to increase the number of members from fifteen to seventeen. It's, you know, it's not a huge, no, it's not a huge, you know, increase, but I think it will allow us to bring some new folks that have been asking, including teacher, you know, the BTU has asked to be part officially of the ELL Task Force, and we have other folks that have requested, so that, we would like that increased. And then also, we want, we would like to request the appointment of the three persons that we're listing here, which are Dr. Patricia Crane de la Garce from Leslie College, Andrea Alonso from Harvard University, and Farah Asiraj Sheh from the BTU. But let's take your questions.
Yes, thank you. So, let's open up the questions or comments for members. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you for that extensive presentation. And I wanted to just take a second, first of all, and, you know, thank the hard work and time and expertise that everyone who's a member of the task force has put in. I mean, you keep up a breakneck schedule, particularly, you know, particularly for a task force, but for anyone that's volunteering their time for the schools. And I wanted to make sure that I know my deep appreciation for all that work. So, I just only, I have one question, and it relates to something you talked about at the very end of your presentation, deals with parent engagement. And so, you spoke to, you know, and I appreciate you speaking to the fact that parent engagement is an issue for all schools. And when you layer upon that issue, a language barrier, it becomes that much more of a challenge. So, you know, you spoke about, there's an unclear definition as to how to properly engage parents in a household with a language barrier. I wonder, does the task force itself yet have any sort of theory as to what might be the best practice for engaging parents? Or is there any sort of, I guess, guidance out there that could be pointed to that would be helpful in this conversation?
We do have some school that do a really good job.
Right.
So, this is what means that we have shiny examples in our district, but those examples does not scale up to, you know, we have best practices through the district. I mean, at one time, we have to go to New York to learn what people do. We don't have to do that anymore, because we have those example here. But the question is how to scale that up. And a lot of time, depending on the school, what they're able to do on their own, the innovation of the principal, that principal's ability to get community partners, a lot rests on that principle. And the way that, because I was the principal for fifteen years, and I know how challenging that was, the difference between my two, I have two different school. In one school, I was able to do a really good job. In the other school, I was not. And a lot has to do with the location of the school. It makes it more challenging. So, there is no, like, one size fit all, but what it does require is the head of the school have a deep understanding of how to engage parents. And what does that mean? And it's not about just sending a notice home and say, "We have this number of open houses, but they don't come."
And again, to your point, you know, that's not something that's limited to households with a language barrier. You know, that's an issue that pervades all schools, right?
So, I have, I have some really good best practices that I have used myself, that have worked for me, and I have shared them with other principals. For example, having meetings at different time of the day, not just that one time. I mean, the same meeting, I have it three, four times, to allow different people to come. And your definitions of parents' engagement cannot be only that parents come to the school.
Yes.
That cannot be your definition. And parents have to feel that you really do want them as partners. They can feel that. So, the way we talk to them, and how they feel when they come, do come to school, if they cannot, a phone call for them to let them know what's happening, not when their child is in trouble, but really, some of the things that, so, things like that that makes parents feel like, oh, they do want my opinion. Now, in order to do that, you need to have the capacity in the school to do it.
I want to.
So.
I wanted to add that last year, Chang and Tam, who heads that Subcommittee, and a student from US Boston, did a whole literature review on strategies for engaging immigrant parents particularly. And there were several, you know, best practices across the United States that, you know, were highlighted in that. We can, you know, we discussed that. But again, I mean, I think, to be fair, there is a tremendous effort at the district level. I think DELAC has been a really positive development. The problem is, you know, this is happening at the citywide. The issue is what's happening at each of the schools, particularly when you have three, five different languages that you have to address. And this is where the whole question of assignment comes in. You know, if you have five different languages, or ten different languages, it's almost impossible to really have that capacity within the school, whereas if you had more, you know, if we're more integrated, then, you know, it would be. But again, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of impediments, including the Department of Justice, who doesn't allow us to do it that way. But there are ways, and, but I think there's been tremendous improvement. There, you know, there's an effort to really get to parents, at least at the district level, that has to be recognized. And the question is, how do we get that to be a reality at each of the schools?
I'll tell you something that piqued my interest on this, was Federal Reserve Bank of Boston. of Boston report on engagement of parents in Lawrence. And I believe it was released just, just very recently, maybe in the last week or so. And so it's great to hear that, you know, there's a, particularly a local research interest in continuing to attack these issues. And so I appreciate you raising all the good work that, that DELAC's been doing. And I hope the work continues and that we, we continue to be a leader in this area. Thank you.
So there is a gap between the district policy and what central offices and what happened, you know, in the individual school level. And, you know, Dr. Chang, I've talked about that before, how do we scale up everything so that every school is good? And that's the challenge, right? Consistency.
The other thing, the other thing to, you know, you raised Lawrence. In Lawrence, the majority of the population is Latin.
One language.
One language.
One language, yes.
So it's a lot easier to, to manage almost everything that we're talking about when you have one primary, you know, you may have other, but when you have sixty-four languages, some of them very, very small numbers scattered all over the city, you know, it's beyond challenge.
Or go into a Binka classroom and you can have ten in one classroom.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, I think, Boston has a very unique situation in that Chelsea across the river, eighty-five percent Latino. So I mean, basically, they can do almost whatever they want, you know, because they, you know, they have the capacity. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not, this is a very unique challenge. Even LA, with all this diversity, it's really, you know, it doesn't have the diversity of language that we have, or, you know, New York does.
Mr. LaCanto, did that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the ELL Task Force. I know you all do so much work, so thank you. It's a lot of hours, a lot of time and dedication. I have, maybe it's not so much a question, a comment, so I understand what you're saying about the language piece, but I do think that it is not rocket science to engage our families. And so we can talk all day, but it really comes down to, I think, what you said. And I know Dr. Chang doesn't want me to say this or hear me say accountability, but at the end of the day, it is about the leadership. And so I see so much professional development coming before us, so much money spent on professional development. And I guess I would like to understand, what is the professional development for supporting our leaders to actually support families to be more engaged? And I'd like to understand better, how does each school actually have a family engagement plan that has measures, that has accountability, so that we can really work together? Because I feel like right now, everybody does whatever they want to do, and there are schools that do it better than other schools. And I think until everybody comes in line and receives, you know, similar professional development, there's, there is a family engagement plan that we're going to be talking about, whether it's ELL or not ELL, we have to do much, much better in engaging our families. So it's not really a question, but a comment and maybe snippet of a question in terms of what happens at each school with the family engagement plan, whether it's, you know, ELL families or not ELL families. I think we struggle in general as a district.
Yeah, you have a comment on that?
Something really quick. So all schools are required to put in plans as part of their quality school plan for parent engagement. I think there is a accountability piece there, but there also is a capacity, capacity not in terms of just resources, but capacity in terms of making sure parents are at a table for some of the most critical work, some of the instructional work. So some ideas that, that we are working to implement next year, having more parents that are part of our instructional walks at schools. So when principals visit each other's schools, when instructional leadership teams at schools are walking classrooms, having parents actually participate in that. Also, this summer, we are going to be finalizing our, we're finalizing our EIE. It used to be our, called our instructional position paper, is now called our... Yeah, Essentials for Instructional Equity Paper. And it's going to be our vision for the key competencies for what instruction should look like throughout this district and is the integration of all the different frameworks that we use. And it will list four competencies that all teachers should be able to master in order to ensure that our students are experiencing academic rigor, or that they're socially, emotionally being supported, and that, that they are having their identities sustained and affirmed. And one of the parts of that paper will be a component of how parents can support all those competencies at home as well. So this lens of how to make sure parents are helping to improve, helping to be part of learning process is something that we're being very sensitive to across the district, not just in our OEL office, not just in our engagement office, but in all our offices. So it will have to continue being a priority for us as a school system.
Can I just make a suggestion too?
Please.
Because I think a few things is, I think Suzanne talked about families constantly having to come to the school. I think we just need to broaden that. And what does that look like in our community? And there's a ton of research around working with families that is not about academics, that is about building a relationship with their child. And so somehow, being able to figure out how that looks, and that is more engaging to families than just only talking about MCAS or, you know, did you get a C minus and whatever. But I think like broadening that.
I'm glad you brought that up, and I want to offer that, you know, it's a good idea to include parents in the, the learning walks and stuff. But I think that if you want to have that atmosphere of parents and students feeling the school is there for them, that you have, each school need to figure out what it is that the, the family needs, what are the activities that can bring the whole family together? And I, the three things that I, over the years, that I found, it was surprising to me how successful the work. One is the way instituted like family field trips on Saturday. When parents actually get to go on field trips with the teachers and they see how teachers interact and the kind of question they ask students on their field trips and what do they do when they come back. Every year, we get more and more parents that want to go on that. The second piece that I had a discussion one time, to invite a high school student to an elementary school and have them talk about growing up, what are some of the things that they wish their parents, things that work for them and what they didn't. And that was like an eye opener for a lot of parents, because nobody ever said that to them. So we just want you guys to be safe. He said, yeah, but you, but, so it's having that, creating that kind of atmosphere, that kind of dialogue, what they learn, how to build, you know, so there's a lot of ideas like that out there. But what it requires is the schools, it's kind of like a change of mindset, that if we don't engage parents and the family, we cannot get to the academic.
If I may note, I think there are, just like culturally linguistically sustained practices, there are phases to this work. We need to confront some of the biases we have against some parents. That's actually phase one. But then the second phase is the authentic relationship, which I'm hearing what you are saying, Alex. But at the end of it, this work is in service to student learning. So if you can do those first two phases, you do have to move to this third phase where parents are contributing to the learning process. That has to be the ultimate goal. So I, I, it's a yes and statement, and I do think that there's phases to this work. And when we really get this work right, parents are at the table in the learning experience, so.
But I do have to disagree with you, though.
Okay. It's okay.
No, you want to say yes and?
I agree with some, but not, not because some of our parents cannot, because they do get intimidated with the academic thing, make that as the thing. But I do feel what we do need is for parents to trust the school. If they give that signal to the students, they will listen to the school.
You could answer it. Ms. Oliver Davila, did you get to answer the question? Okay, thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes. I think the first thing is that I never realized that fifty percent of our district were English language learners. And then I think about the things that we talk about our district, and then I wonder, what's our capacity to really deliver on just the general statements we make about wanting cognitively demanding tasks, et cetera? And then we talk about that, we have sixty-four languages, and so that there are many children that we can't really even speak to in their native language. And so the question, and then on top of it, we pride ourselves in giving parents choices. But sometimes I think in, in all of our endeavors to make it work for everyone, we can't, we don't have the resources to really implement in every single school that we've given a person choice to what they need. So at what point does the district have to step back and figure out how we deliver meaningful choice, so that we do have filled classrooms with teachers who can teach children and allowing parents to know, well, here are the two schools where your child can get this versus ten schools in which eight of them, we may not be able to do that? So that how do we begin to sort of manage the resources we have better and help parents to utilize those better so kids' outcomes are better? And then how do we begin to bring to capacity things like if we've got this number of parents, the DELAC and the family engagement departments don't have the capacity to deal with, you know, thirty thousand families each in terms of trying to give schools the supports they need as well as to engage parents? So, you know, I mean, I wonder if we looked at our departments that are doing that work and looked at other districts to figure out, you know, what, what's the, how many people do you need in each of those, those departments to really meet the needs of fifty thousand very diverse families? So that we have to relook at some of those resources, so if we really want to talk to parents, we have the capacity to do that? Our teachers, what percentage of our overall educators are bilingual or multilingual in terms of the number of students that we have, you know, and where should they be placed? Here you say that we can't ask a teacher to go to where students need them because they have a choice. I mean, so how do we deal with all of this choice and the actual needs of our kids? Because we're spending a lot of money trying to do a lot of things, but we're falling short in a lot of places. And it's not because anybody wants to do the wrong thing, but somehow, we need to sort of untangle some of our policies to figure out what, how we can best serve the kids that we have.
Dr. Chang, do you have any comments on that?
Those are all very tough things for us to do. I think what parents, one thing I do hear parents want, when they start their children into BPS, they want to understand there is pathways for programming all the way through. And we do have a lot of choice, we do have a lot of programming in all parts of the city, and how all these pathways connect with each other from pre-K to twelve is very important. That is a big part of the Build BPS work, is a big part of the coherence work we're speaking about. And we are, we have, we have plans. We, we will, we have to tackle this issue.
One other, one other thing is that, and this is an ongoing discussion, because I think in the case of English language learners, the fact that the oversight of the federal government has been a wonderful motor for BPS to move forward, but it also sort of binds BPS, you know, on the kinds of programs or the kinds of organization. And one of the things that we've been discussing, at least with Carla, Carla Strada, where a period of time, is really beginning to build a case for the federal government so that they understand this issue of the, you know, how program and, and the balance between choice and program and the balance between the, the assignment and how kids are distributed in the city and program integrity. I'm, my concern is that we, unless we resolve those two issues, it's going to be very hard for the district to really create the kind of integral programs that will allow kids to do exactly what you're saying. Go from kindergarten and be able to tell an ELL parent how the kid is, their kid is going to go from elementary to middle to, to high school. And, and what kinds of programs are going to be available and where are they going to be, are they going to be close to home, et cetera? I think when we did the little study with, with, with the K-Verdian community, it was really fascinating, because we asked the, the folks from the budget office to, to do some of the data mining. And then the first question is, where do the K-Verdian students live? One map, everybody around North Dorchester. Where do K-Verdian students go to school?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. So that it was, you know, sort of, you know, bringing down and trying to organize and think through, and I think in this, you know, OELL was really tremendous, I think, okay, so how do we build a pathway for that K-Verdian?
And the sad thing is for the K-Verdian community, the sad thing is what we're hearing now from the community is because they can't figure it out, many of the new students are going to charter school.
Yeah.
And that's not something that we want, it's not because they want to go to charter school.
It's easier to understand.
Yeah. But again, it's, it's like, unless we can begin to break some of these, that's why we wanted to sort of raise these big picture issues, because they're, you know, they're hard, they're hard issues to address.
Well, Dr. Uriarte, I, I think the issues that Ms. Robinson raised and fellow members have raised and what you have raised in your comments and Ms. Lee as well, are perfect examples of why, even though the work of the Task Force has evolved over the years, and Ms. Lee, I chuckled when you said, I was at this at the very beginning.
So were you.
I was on this committee when we were talking about the need to have it. And at that point, it was for very different reasons, right? We had the federal government breathing down our neck, and now their priorities may have changed, but I think this Task Force is working so well with the superintendent and his team. And, you know, the numbers that we see here about how important this is, we do not succeed as a district unless our ELL students succeed, because it's such an important part, not only of our total students, but also, by the way, as you point out, of our SPED population as well. And those are critical figures, thirty-three percent of all students with disabilities are ELL learners, as well as you point out here. And that figure, sixty-four first languages spoken among ELL in Boston public schools, that's a number that should be burned in all of our brains. And you're absolutely right, as you mentioned, and as some of the fellow members have mentioned as well, very different from a lot of other districts across the country. That is huge. And, you know, I was in a classroom in Binka just a couple of weeks ago, and there were probably fifteen languages in that one classroom being spoken. And yet that teacher, Mr. Silver, was doing a phenomenal job during the speech contest, right? I think several of us judged it over the course of several days. And, you know, we see so much great work going on, but the work of the ELL Task Force is critical. I love how it has evolved over time, how it works hand in hand with the district. And Dr. Uriarte, thank you for your leadership on this, along with Superintendent Chang, your team's willingness to work so closely with the Task Force. But the work is not done. And I think it perfectly sets up for, we will be taking a vote at our next meeting to continue the work for another year. And there was recommendation for several new members that bring a diverse range of experience to this, that you are recommending, join, all the way from Farah Asiraj, I believe, whom many of us do know, and she has been in the district and within ELL and is now moving over to be a BTU organizer. And thank you for, President Alak Tang, for recommending her to join. But also Dr. Alonso, you know, nationally recognized figure and working over at Harvard now, as well as Patricia Crane, Dr. Crane D. Galasa?
Galase.
Galase, right? So excellent folks and a number of folks who are continuing to work on this. So the mission has evolved, the criticalness of purpose has not ended. Even as the federal government's priorities have, may be shifting in the future, it doesn't change the work that we need to do in this district. So thank you, Ms. Lee and Dr. Uriarte, for co-chairing this. Thank you for, Mr. Berendino, for facilitating this. I know sometimes it can be challenging, because as fellow members have noted, this is an extremely active task force that meets on a very regular basis with a lot of moving parts. So thank you for your work in facilitating it. And we look forward to this mission continuing and to the school committee taking action on this at our next meeting. So thank you for your participation this evening.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to our next report, a plan for turnaround at Brighton and Exel High Schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Turnaround, Lisa Vito, is going to please step forward. And I know school leaders from both Exel and Brighton are joining you as well. But first, Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening remarks?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much. While they are coming up, I want to start by saying that BPS's theory of action for our high school transformation is to create programming in our secondary schools that prepares our young people for college, career, and life. And that means learning must be rigorous and it must be relevant. Learning must occur inside of school and outside of school. And learning... And learning should really replicate adult life. Since Brian and Excel plans, since Brian and Excel High Schools were designated Level Four in September, the school committee members have heard about the history at each school, the context around the designation, and the work that we have been doing to create plans for both schools focused around linked learning. This evening, we'll hear from incoming Headmasters Renee McCall and Rob Remedy about the futures of Excel and Brighton respectfully. As the school committee knows, I issued an initial release of both schools' turnaround plans on June seventh, and by July seventh, this committee, Commissioner Chester, and each school's local stakeholder group can propose modifications of a plan to me. I will be meeting with the Brian High School Local Stakeholder Group tomorrow, June twenty-second, and the Excel Local Stakeholder Groups on Monday, June twenty-ninth, to hear their feedback directly, and both those meetings will be public meetings. After proposals are submitted, I have thirty days to consider proposals and issue final versions of the turnaround plans. I'm also excited to announce this evening, the district will receive two point seven seven million dollars from the state to fund turnaround strategies at both of these schools. And this will, this funding will be over in the next three years. These funds will be important support for the school's improvement. In addition, I want to remind the school committee that they approved a BPS budget that includes an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding in support of the turnaround work at Brighton, five hundred thousand dollars there, and Excel, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that is on top of the two point seven seven million dollars both schools will be receiving. The two schools will be receiving combined over the next three years. So tonight, Renee and Rob will provide the school committee with an overview of the turnaround plans and highlight specific strategies that are unique to each school. Our two headmasters are joined by turnaround director Liza Vito and Instructional Superintendent Jonathan Landman. I turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, Chairman O'Neill, members of the school committee, superintendent, community members and staff. My name's Jonathan Landman, I'm one of the instructional superintendents. Most of my portfolio of schools is comprised of the high schools, including Brighton High, which is one of the two schools we will be discussing this evening.
Hi, I'm Liza Vito. I direct the Office of Turnaround and Transformation for the Boston Public Schools. And as the committee knows, I work with our Level Four schools, including Brighton and Excel.
We're pleased to be here this evening to support the new headmasters of Brighton and Excel High Schools as they share our vision for the turnaround of both schools. At the June seventh meeting, the instructional superintendents introduced each of the new leaders to the committee. This evening, Liza and I would like to reintroduce Rob Remedy and Renee McCall to you. In a few moments, we'll be turning to them to speak to you about the two schools' turnaround plans. So here's Rob Remedy. Rob is very good at school. He's a summa cum laude graduate of Boston College. He's earned a certificate of advanced graduate studies from Northeastern University, and last year was a Lynch Leadership Fellow at Boston College. Rob taught English beginning of his career for seven years, where he was a really effective teacher leader. He established a social networking site to facilitate cross-departmental collaboration, drove the establishment of data inquiry cycles at the school, directed a program for at-risk students, and supported new and novice teachers. On the strength of his tremendous teacher leadership, he was appointed in 2013 to serve as the principal of the Edwards Middle School. While at the Edwards Middle School, he instituted shared instructional expectations across classrooms, data inquiry cycles, a differentiated array of intervention and acceleration strategies, and an advisory program. And we were so impressed by the kind of leadership that he showed at the Edwards Middle School that he was a, that he was our choice to lead the turnaround process at Brighton High.
And I'm privileged to introduce my colleague Renee McCall, who's a Boston native and proud graduate of Boston Latin School. Renee is a career changer into education after eight years as a certified public accountant, which we'll hear will serve her well in her new role at Excel. Renee taught high school math for eight years, teaching courses in AP Statistics, personal finance and accounting, and worked as an administrator at another BPS turnaround school, Madison Park. Renee served as principal of the Timelte Middle School in Roxbury since 2013, with an emphasis on building teacher leadership capacity around data inquiry and analysis to drive instructional improvements. And she developed strong climate and culture with grade-level community meetings that promoted student voice and strong relationships between students and staff. A lifelong learner, Ms. McCall is currently working on her doctorate in educational leadership from the University of Pennsylvania.
So the turnaround plans that you're about to hear about are anchored in the district's theory of action for how we'll redesign learning at the secondary level. Four of the key elements of this theory of action are that learning will focus on the robust academics needed for college and career success, that students will encounter extended, enriching exposure to college and career pathway experiences, that we'll be able to engage students through authentic, culturally and otherwise relevant learning experiences, and that personalized supports will ensure that every student can access the curriculum and take advantage of the opportunity that their school provides to them. Together, these four pillars will accelerate the learning of our students at Brighton and Excel High Schools and set them up for success in college, career, and life. At Brighton and Excel, we'll bring these four pillars to the fore through the linked learning approach to high school redesign. In the linked learning approach, students' education centers around a career-based technical core. Through the pathway's technical core, students gain access to work-based learning opportunities, mentors from industry, job shadows, internships, dual enrollment experiences leading to certifications, et cetera. In English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies courses, teachers will work with the career-based teachers to develop interdisciplinary, project-based units of study. This interdisciplinary approach helps students to see the relevance of their academic content as well as enhancing the depth and rigor of the student's experience. And because teachers who collaborate on curriculum also share the same students, the adults are able to work together and to get to know their students very well and provide personalized supports to help them to succeed.
At Brighton High School, we've selected the pathway theme of Arts and New Media. So the pathway courses will include offerings in visual and graphic arts, as well as communications through new media, like Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. We're looking forward to partnering with WGBH to help think through and provide Brighton High students in the media pathway with opportunities to learn about, observe, and perhaps pursue internships in media-related work-based learning placements. We look forward to collaborating to determine what the partnership will look like over the next few years. In general, we aim to teach students the foundations of visual communication and social media technologies to advance their entrepreneurialism so they can leave a lasting mark on our future society.
Just as Brighton High School aims to advance their students' entrepreneurialism, Excel High School has recently developed critical partnerships with Sociedad Latina, Youth Cities, and Build to deepen and develop students' entrepreneurial mindsets. Professional development will be provided to teachers as they build lessons through an entrepreneurial lens that helps students to connect the dots between coursework and the real world. Students will think innovatively to make decisions, solve problems, and work collaboratively with their peers as well as staff. And students will explore classes in the two strands of emerging technologies and business innovation on topics such as entrepreneurship, as I just mentioned, accounting, as well as introduction to computer science and coding. We are thrilled that the instructional strategy of project-based learning will be the focus of our strategies and focus on the strengths of our diverse population of students.
The committee may remember that at a time when I spoke with you previously, we talked about the turnaround practices from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Beginning in 2010, the department did research on the first cohort of Level Four schools to determine what were the factors that were making some schools experience rapid gains and rapid progress, and what was holding other schools back from making any progress at all or even declining further. And on this slide, you'll see the four turnaround practices that were determined through that research, and they're pictured here on the slides. And we've organized the Brighton and Excel turnaround plans around these four research-based practices. And so tonight, Rob and Renee will share with you the strategies for each turnaround practice, and will highlight strategies, each of them will highlight strategies for two turnaround practices that are specific to either Brighton or Excel. So Renee will begin with turnaround practice one.
With the redesign of Excel, we are transforming the learning experience of our high schoolers with a focus on teaching and learning through the lens of a business-technology pathway development. Specific to turnaround practice one, we know that in order for students to have a different learning experience, that we as adults have to approach our work differently as well. Tonight, I'd like to highlight our work in strategy one to embed professional collaboration at the school. We have developed a compelling theory of action that states, if Excel High School develops and sustains systems and structures that allow time for teachers to collaborate, and they co-develop rigorous, engaging lessons that are centered around cognitively demanding tasks that integrate career pathways, then students will make meaning of their learning and will be prepared to apply that to college and/or career opportunities. In support of this work, we have built an additional one hundred and six hours of professional development and collaboration into our schedule. In addition to teachers collaborating, our district-level teams, as well as industry partners, will collaborate to help us norm our understanding of effective instruction, develop strong team structures, support the work of I L T, and provide ongoing coaching around data inquiry and analysis to inform instruction and accelerate student learning.
The second turnaround practice is intentional practices for improving instruction. The manner in which Brighton High students will learn next year will look and feel different. As you can see, many of the strategies we've identified under turnaround practice two involve enhancing instruction by utilizing the linked learning approach to make curriculum more authentic and relevant for our students. Tonight, I'd like to highlight our plans under strategy one specifically. Strategy one is strengthening the quality of instructional practice. Our strategy is grounded in the superintendent's strategic implementation plan around cognitively demanding tasks and culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. Specifically, we plan to develop a program of coherent and targeted professional learning for staff. We plan to roll out what I'm calling the Bengal Three, identified by the instructional leadership team, which is a repertoire of instructional strategies that will help us to operationalize our instructional focus as a school and to help us realize project-based learning to its fullest potential. It'll build from year to year as we continue to increase the strategies in our repertoire that are helping to meet the needs of our diverse student body. We'll also focus on building common expectations across the school in all departments, including data walls and curriculum boards, as well as expectations for homework, student behavior in classrooms, as well as the workplace. We'll also utilize a multi-tiered systems and supports for academics approach. Specifically, in grades nine and ten, we'll be adding more intervention courses in math and English Language Arts. We'll utilize universal screeners to help identify students and their needs. Our incoming ninth graders will be screened as soon as the new school year begins. We'll also be working with our tenth graders to help support those who are behind. Finally, we'll utilize instructional coaching. We'll be increasing instructional coaching and observations in the classrooms, providing coaching meetings with teachers, facilitating common planning time meetings to support lesson planning and the use of data to inform instruction.
The third turnaround practice is student-specific supports and instruction to all students. Even as we are improving instruction, we know that we need to tailor our supports to ensure that all students are successful. We have a variety of strategies designed to use data to determine how to best support our students and to ensure that these supports are working effectively. Tonight, I'd like to highlight our advisory work in strategy number four. Excel offers a daily forty-minute advisory block for students who are grouped with ten to twelve of their peers assigned to the same staff person for the four years that they attend the school. During advisory time, students will build 21st century skills and develop a college-going culture. Students will explore pathways through field trip opportunities and internships and work on soft skills such as mock interviews and building a resume. Students and their advisors will develop relational trust that has been proven to have a strong impact on student achievement in school communities, as they engage in restorative justice circles that focus on community building and peer mediation. Weekly, students will also engage in affinity groupings to further build community amongst their peers and adults in the building.
The fourth and final turnaround practice goes under the broad heading of school climate and culture. We know that a strong climate provides the foundation for a highly effective learning environment. In our turnaround plans, we highlighted many strategies to strengthen student climate and culture under this fourth practice. Tonight, I'd like to focus on our first strategy, which is to establish a college-and-career-focused culture across the school. Students will be more motivated to learn and more engaged with their schooling if they understand the relationship between what happens in school and their future. We're taking a variety of steps to ensure that students make those connections, beginning with our incoming ninth graders through a ninth-grade orientation, which will be the first of many times students are exposed to the expectations of work and college-level academic environments. We'll be discussing themes in depth, and we'll be echoing them throughout the year, specifically through our new advisory program, which we are calling CREW in the upcoming school year. As a daily advisory enrichment block, this will be a key structure for cultivating this culture of high expectations and peer reinforcement. We'll also be using our advisory structure for the integration of pathway expectations. We'll be collaborating with industry professionals to develop competencies, skills, and behaviors for students that span both school and the workplace. And finally, we'll be increasing college-and-career visibility in terms of curriculum, where the guidance department will be designing and delivering a comprehensive guidance curriculum at all grade levels through advisory. Also symbolically, we'll be naming our crews after different colleges and universities. We'll be increasing the hallway decor. And experientially, we'll be embedding college visits at all grade levels, starting in grade nine.
Finally, as this slide illustrates, Brighton and Excel serve many of the district's highest-needs students and students from marginalized groups. We know that we cannot close opportunity and achievement gaps for our students across the district until we are able to significantly improve the quality of schools like Brighton and Excel. The district has chosen linked learning as a turnaround strategy because it is proving to be an effective tool for increasing equity and closing opportunity gaps in high schools across the country. For instance, across nine districts in California, students who had low prior achievement, who entered linked learning-certified pathways, were more than five percentage points more likely, sorry, less likely to drop out, and over eight percentage points more likely to graduate than similar peers in traditional high school programs. And English language learners in certified pathways earned almost twelve more credits and one more college preparatory requirement than similar peers in traditional high school programs. And finally, among African-American students who enrolled in a post-secondary institution, students in certified pathways were over twelve percentage points more likely to enroll in a four-year institution than their peers. On behalf of my colleagues, thank you for the opportunity to share the Excel and Brighton turnaround plans with you this evening, and we look forward to responding to your questions.
Thank you, and thank you to all for presenting this evening. Open up for questions for colleagues. Ms. Oliver Davila?
Thank you. Thank you very much. It seems like Excel has a really great partner, and maybe Brighton should have, if you don't have a Success Boston partner, Eric Estevas is over there from Boston Foundation, he can hook you up. My question is, this is great, I wish the Sociedad students were here, because this is what they've been talking about for the last year around student-centered learning and these approaches and the career pathways and the dual moment, so they'll be so excited. I just wanted to quickly ask you, there was one point on the family engagement, but if you could expand a little bit more, because obviously, when you go through turnaround, there's a lot of trauma, a lot of emotion, and so I'm just wondering if you could just expand a little bit on some of your approaches in re-engaging families around this new model?
I think currently there are a lot of questions around the linked learning approach and the designation of turnaround. And so we have started a listening tour at Excel. This past week, we started at Viet Aid in Dorchester, and it was pretty well attended by parents as well as students. And we are offering three additional opportunities for parents and families and students to come out to express their hopes and dreams for parents and families and students to come out to express their hopes and dreams for Excel in the coming year, and those will be again throughout the city. And the last one on August 21st will be at Excel High School.
Similarly, at Brighton High, we are also launching a listening tour. It's going to take place in July and August. We have six sites picked out in neighborhoods across the city where we can engage with families from different neighborhoods. Our school represents virtually every neighborhood in Boston, and so we'll be sharing details about the turnaround plan then, soliciting questions, ideas, and also recruiting for the upcoming school year for important bodies like student school site council and the school parent council. So we're hoping to use the summer listening tour to also launch an ongoing relationship with families throughout the school year.
And then superintendent, you also have meetings coming up with the stakeholder group as well, superintendent does for each of the schools.
That's correct, so there will be one meeting at Excel and one meeting at Bryan High School, and both those meetings will be public.
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you for your presentation. Question, what percentage of your current students are returning to the new model?
That's a good question.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, you may have stumped us on that one. We didn't predict that question. We would have to check into that and get back to the committee.
Okay. One of my questions is, I mean, this is a big difference in terms of the kinds of programming that they'll be entering in, and I know for freshmen, this will be the trajectory for their whole high school career, but how will this impact, you know, seniors who have one year and how does this, how do they transition from what they were doing, looking at their credits, you know, adapting to this new kind of programming and being ready to, in one year, move on versus sophomores? I heard you say there were some special things going on for sophomores, but just wondering at each level, this seems like it's a very big but very positive change.
So what we did not say explicitly is that the linked learning model will be phased in over time, so start with next year's freshman, they'll grow to, grow one year at a time. But we are providing professional development for all teachers, so some of the tenants of linked learning will be infused to the other grade levels next year. I'm going to turn it over to the two headmasters that can talk more specifically about how they may, how many see some of this integration earlier on and maybe talk and add anything you want about the kind of phased-up approach.
I was just going to add to what Dr. Chang mentioned. Sophomores through seniors will have an opportunity to participate in elective courses, introduction to computer science, coding, accounting, entrepreneurship, so they will have those opportunities. In addition, they will partake in internships and apprenticeships as well and the job shadows as well.
At Brighton, I would also add that because all teachers will receive training in the project-based learning approach this summer, even students in grades 10, 11, and 12, although they won't be part of the formal linked learning model with all of the elements, will start to be exposed to project-based learning units of study. And the idea there is really to help provide opportunities for students to be working together more collaboratively and to start developing the kinds of collaboration and advocacy skills that we want them to graduate with and move on to college or career, whichever it may be for them. But we think that all students will get exposed to that and leave with more access to those skills, starting with all grade levels at Brighton in the upcoming year.
When students were choosing Brighton or Excel for this school year, did they have the understanding around the focus areas that you would be looking at, or was that not known at the time when people were applying?
So for the earlier choice rounds, the turnaround plan was not yet available. Once linked learning had been selected as a model, which was sort of prior to the turnaround plan becoming available, we started having more public meetings. We had some meetings in March with families and students, there were student-focused groups, that kind of information to get the word out, to your point, so people could choose to opt in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to follow a little bit on Ms. Robinson's point around how we've been recruiting students. So I want to better understand, maybe it didn't happen this year because of lining up the assignment process with the turnaround plan, but is the intent going forward to market linked learning and the specific pathways within each school to the type of students that you bring in? And maybe to put that another way, are we do, I know we're not going to have any applications as part of entry to Excel or Brighton, but essentially, the only reason a kid is going to go there is if they want to enter one of these pathways. Is that, that's the intent over time?
I'd say that we certainly envision that the schools will be actively marketing themselves over time and will be, you know, promoting the exciting opportunities that the pathways provide, and we certainly hope the kids who are coming to the schools will be drawn by those, by the special natures of the schools. I also think it's really important, though, for school, because these are open enrollment schools, and we do have students who get assigned to the schools for various reasons. It's really important to say also that we do, we're paying, in both these turnaround plans, paying attention to opportunities within the schools for students to have choice and to have the agency which comes from choice, and to understand that these pathways themselves are kind of broad pathways which are intended to expose kids to a whole range of possibilities. So although they do focus in a particular area, this is not like a traditional vocational program where you are really locked into a specific job or career at the end.
Okay. So just to stay on that theme for a minute, if you were to say, enter Brighton with, what is it, New Media is one of the focus programs, you found maybe in your sophomore, junior year, you weren't that into it, would that, would there be, I guess, an opportunity to maybe broaden or change your focus, or otherwise, I guess, just essentially be a general education-type student, or is that, am I, am I taking too much of a CTE-type view of what these programs look like?
Yes. In my experience working with schools that implemented linked learning in a previous district, what you saw, young people saw the learning experience, academic experience more relevant, and while it may be relevant to a particular pathway, there were applications across a wide spectrum of industries, of themes, so, for example, STEM upbringing, I know is a school that Chairman O'Neill visited, Rob and Renee both visited on a recent trip to Los Angeles. While the focus was around STEM, the bigger emphasis really was around community and volunteerism, and so the students who were doing projects in a community focused around STEM, but they were building on very important leadership skills that will be critically important for them as they move on to college and career.
I think it's interesting, you ask an excellent question, Mr. LaCanto, and I think a perfect example, and we're going to hear very shortly from Dr. Walker Gregory with the Kennedy Health Careers Academy, and I, if I remember correctly from the presentation, about 56% of your students say that they want, of your graduates, say that they want to pursue health careers. Do I have that figure correct? Thank, I just tried to pull it out to look, but, and so it exposes them, but not all of them decide to pursue it. Some of them say, I followed this and it showed me that I didn't want to pursue this, but they still learn so much there. If you look at the graduation rates and the success rates of those students, they're still getting an excellent education, and I think what's interesting here with linked learning is they're learning the skill of project-based learning, which is critical. And in this case, at Brighton, it would be applied to New Media and working with WGBH, I think is brilliant. It's one of the largest employers right down the street, and, you know, between TV and radio and film, et cetera, what an opportunity there. And some of the entrepreneurial ideas in Excel certainly make sense, and some of the community organizations are going to be working with as well, but more importantly, it's teaching and project-based learning, which is a skill that's going to make sense as they go on to college and work. And so that, to me, is going to be the big takeaway for the students, and if they decide to pursue the pathway, but if they get there and say they don't like it, they're still learning critical skills. Headmasters, correct me if you feel differently of what you're trying to achieve for your students.
No, and you know, I think that's a very helpful distinction to be had here, and particularly, you know, juxtaposing this with a CTE-type education, you know, because I think we all think about, or at least some of us, it might come to mind, the experience with Madison a few years back, when, you know, we continued to have students administratively assigned to a technical education program, Susan didn't want to be there. This might, this obviously is a different program, and so I think it's helpful in the context of when we are going out and recruiting and we're talking about the program, to remind people that, you know, that there's a focus here, there's a theme, but it's also drawing upon these larger approaches, if you will, to learning, teaching and learning.
I think it's part of a, more of a general trend of, you know, we have traditionally had a couple of highly-focused schools and then some general schools that are more based upon geography. And the schools that have been most challenged the past couple of years have been schools that are more based upon geography, and I think having a wide range of portfolios, we have some incredible career opportunities in this city. And as we evolve, I love what Madison Park is doing about restructuring the program focus that they have there, getting rid of some, adding some new ones, and trying to beef up the opportunities there. Health careers, a number of others that we have around the city that make perfect sense for the large employers in the city and the opportunities for our students. And I think, you know, for Brighton and Excel, allowing them to focus, I think Charlesdown is looking at this as well, thinking through. If you talk with Will Thomas, the headmaster of Charlesdown, he's thinking through how to have specialty programs as well that will become more, I think, of the focus of a number of our schools, and students will start to think in terms of programs that they're interested in first, hopefully, versus geographic location.
Chairman, you're exactly right. The goal is to create a portfolio of high school options throughout the city of Boston that are attached to various themes, draw on student interests, draw on, really promote student choice and agency. Project-based learning will be a theme because we want to make sure learning has real-life applications. Young people are solving real-life problems, so they're gaining kind of the skills they will need in college and career and in life, and Boston is a perfect place to do it because of the many rich industries that are here in this city. And so we should have an array of high school options, all with themes around it. That should not, that is, that is a very viable mission for us.
Yeah, I think the one other thing I'll mention is, you know, I'll applaud the district's efforts here in the sense that, you know, the vehicle that we're using for this turnaround or for these changes, if you will, is the turnaround process, but what this really speaks to is the broader approach that the district's taking in the high school redesign, and so I think it's great to be able to, kill two birds with one stone isn't the greatest phrase, but I, maybe call, call it a win-win, right?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Dr. Yariate?
Thank you very much for this, and I really, you know, I start out by saying that we're all looking forward to watching you implement this very interesting process. I want to concentrate my questions on, you know, the question that you raised on, about improving the opportunity and achievement gaps, and I, you know, I agree with you, without you addressing the needs of these particular students, you're not going to be successful. So that you need to be able to really be very focused on that. You followed the conversation around English language learners, so I'm going to focus on that. I was wondering whether you knew or you had been able to identify the languages that students speak in your school and the capacity, the language capacity that you have, what, you know, what languages do your teachers and staff speak?
Sure, I can start. We have a multilingual population at Brighton High School. Over 40% of our students are English learners. I would say the primary language would be Spanish, although we also have several others, including Portuguese, Arabic, Chinese, so there are several. I would say the capacity in terms of staff would be probably more heavily towards Spanish, and so much like I heard in the last presentation, we're obviously still working to increase the language capacity for other languages in our multilingual program.
You have, you have a multilingual SEI program, or you have a language-specific program?
We have a multilingual.
Okay, are you planning to change that?
Not in the upcoming school year, that I, though, we'll revisit it with the Office of English Language Learners next year as we plan for the second year of our plan.
I ask because, you know, the, you know, have you figured out what the outcomes are for kids in the SEI multilingual in your school?
So we are looking to, we're actually adding a, an additional sort of pathway for our, for our English learners. One of the challenges that we are facing is around students who are coming to us over age and needing a lot of support in their language acquisition. So we're really excited about supporting those students with additional coursework, with linking their work experience. Many of our students are working, linking that to their academic experience, and being able to support them with their language development in that way and offering credit for it. And so in terms of their outcomes in their traditional classes, they tend to do pretty well, it's just that they have many, many kind of credits to acquire when they arrive.
You're putting, let me deal with Brighton High and then I'll, you're implementing a type of program that is very intensive in the relationship between students and teachers. You know, there's no way to implement this without intense relationships between, you know, all the different stakeholders. So I'm wondering how you're adapting your strategies to address, to allow English language learners to participate with that level of intensity with your teachers?
Well, I think one of the exciting elements of our plan is that our ESL department specifically is one of our strongest, and those teachers have very strong relationship with their students. We are actually increasing the department size by one next year, and one of our ESL teachers will be completely outside of the classroom to provide leadership and guidance to other teachers, but also to the students and their programmatic needs. And when I mentioned before the pathway that we're creating with additional after-school courses, as well as summer academies for our English learners to help them accelerate their pathway to graduation, we're also going to be linking the work-based learning element to that, so students can get direct support in their language development in a way that is embedded in the context of the jobs they're doing after school, either through something that we've matched up for them through our work-based learning program, or through jobs that some, many students come to us already having and working full-time.
You're planning to have a strong relationship with WGBH. You're also planning to do dual enrollment with local universities. How are you going to facilitate the participation of ELLs in those initiatives?
I think we have a lot of planning to do, and one of the things that will be happening over the next year is the creation of an advisory board, which is part of the linked learning approach, and really working with the industry, and as we develop partnerships, any partnerships really, bringing in the work-based people from the industry to help us develop what the supports will look like, so that we're creating a partnership with the internship sites, the job sites as well, so that we're supporting students both at school but also in the workplace.
Just to say one piece about this, one of the things that was very interesting to me when we went out to California to visit linked learning sites, there, many of those sites have a lot of English learners, and those students, I think, are thriving in those programs, and we have a partnership with Connect Ed, which is the organization which supports the linked learning, you know, rollout throughout California, and I think we can tap into their wisdom as we move forward. Right now, we're thinking more about the first year, about the ninth-grade rollout, and that, so we're a little bit further away from building, building out the full infrastructure for some of those pieces, like internships, et cetera, for the other stu, you know, for the older kids, so it's a little more time.
I would really advise you to think through, because you have, 41% of your population are English lan, that's not a small number. So you have to be successful with them if you're going to be successful. So you need, you need to be able from the beginning to, let me ask you something.
Dr. Yariate, hold on, I think Superintendent Chang, I think, wanted to respond to your comment.
Really, really quickly, as we were beginning to... Really, really quickly. As we were beginning the process for planning at Bryan High School, these questions were actually asked specifically by teachers as well at the school. And so our Office of English Language Learners has been a partner in the developmental plan. There is still a lot to figure out. We understand it is a priority. And actually, your question around how do you ensure OEL, I mean, ELL student access in some of these job experiences, that was actually a job, that was actually an interview question for both of you. And so it was one of my four interview questions for them. And so it is a priority for me, it is a priority for the school district. I know it's a priority for the staff at that school. We'll come back with an update for you.
I would really appreciate it. Let me give you an idea around dual enrollment, which, you know, I've had experience from the other end. Many times, for example, Spanish-speaking students or French, you know, Brazilian, you know, Portuguese can benefit from classes like Spanish for Spanish speaker classes in local universities. It's not a major leap, but it's a way for them to get, you know, high-level capacity in their own language, you know, using the dual language, the dual enrollment process. So that may be something that you may want to explore.
Which at the same time gives them college-level experience as well, which is critical, right?
And it's something where they're going to be, you know, if they come in with any kind of strengths in their own language, they can be successful.
Are you talking about college courses in their L1? Is that your-
Yeah.
In their L1?
Yeah.
So they're further developing their L1?
Their L1, exactly. But you're giving them, you know, they would be in a class with college kids that are learning Spanish.
So, but they're getting the college experience, which is critical, right?
Yeah. My son did that with a couple of the Fenway partners. They learn literature in their language. They, you know, and that's, you know, you know, it's, you know, college credit and it's something that affirms their, but again, I mean, I really invite you to think about this. This is not a small number, especially in Brighton. Small number of students there, you've got to, you know, if you're going to be successful, you're going to be successful with them, okay? The same with Excel. What are your plans in relationship to the integration of ELLs in a substantive way? Not on the side, but in a substantive way?
Well, I would agree with everything with Rob said. 31% of our population are English language learners. The primary language is Vietnamese.
Vietnamese.
Vietnamese, followed by Spanish. And I will say that our LatF works hand-in-hand with our Student Development Counselor, specifically over English language learning students, so that, again, we can be sure what their academic needs are and to ensure that they are also getting the same experiences that all other students are receiving. And I just wanted to mention that we have a schedule that allows for juniors and seniors to have a fixed schedule at the end of the day, where they have opportunities to engage in internships, the dual enrollment opportunities, and they also have electives at the end of the day. So their core courses will take place during the morning hours. In the afternoon, there is flexibility in their schedule.
But how are you doing the, you know, how are you implementing your link learning? How are you integrating the Vietnamese-speaking students into that link learning? Are you building relationships with folks on Dorchester Avenue? I mean, how are you going to be doing it?
Oh, sure. So we most recently had our first parent engagement meeting at the VietAid. So we want to continue to build relationships with that community and to ensure that, again, they have those opportunities just as other students. So in the afternoon, again, the schedule will be fixed. So therefore, students will have, or teachers will have an opportunity to collaborate, both with elective teachers as well as other colleagues of theirs, to ensure that students have opportunities for the project-based learning and to engage in the work-based readiness to have, again, job shadow opportunities and field trips. So we'll say that the LatF, along with our Student Development Counselor, will, again, focus on those academic needs of the ELLs.
Thank you. Dr. Yuriyate, I think it was important to hear what the superintendent just said, which is the commitment of making sure that the Office of ELL is going to be working with the headmasters as these plans continue to revolve during the summer. I think you've raised critical issues for them to consider. And, you know, as we said with the ELL Task Force, ELL is such a large percentage of our students, the district can't do well unless our ELL students do well. You're absolutely right to point out in both of these schools, there's such large populations in these individual schools that they can't succeed in the turnaround plans. And if they're introducing a new type of learning, which is project-based learning and link learning, it's critical that they have the understanding that students, you know, who are learning in different languages need to be able to take part in that. So I think you raised critical issues for them. But I appreciate the superintendent pointing out that he hears that message. And they will be both working on it and delivering and reporting back to us on that issue.
Yes, just one more thing. It is critically important that if you have, at the secondary level, ELL students, especially low-level ELL students, that they are also, at the same time, getting explicit English language development and the use and practice of the English language. And what I have seen, and I'm not quite sure what the research has said, because the research around link learning is still fairly young, but any sort of learning that requires high levels of interaction among young people does promote the language development. And the type of curriculum and the type of pedagogy that you see in link learning will support the English language development of students, especially those who are ELD Level 1 and 2 and need a lot of the BICS, not the cognitive academic language, the inter-BICS. Somebody help me out?
The inter what?
BICS.
Basic Interpersonal-
What? Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills. Thank you. So-
Too many anachronisms.
So that, so I have seen that this form of learning and pedagogy does really promote English language development.
But I would say also, I mean, especially in Excel, you have an opportunity, you're building a strong relationship with that Vietnamese community and allowing, because you want those students to be able to also get the skills from the kinds of projects that they're going to be able to do.
That's right.
And, you know, so, you know, using the community is going to be an important one. I'm, you know, again, you have one shot at this, you know, and we have to make sure that that is a good one.
I just wanted to add for Excel High School, as an example, we are working with Excel. So we're doing entrepreneurship in Spanish. And we have a triangle between us and Babson College. So it's all very project-based. And I know Renee from working years at the Timolte and she has had a ton of partnerships, I'm sure. Same goes for you. I agree. But I think it is about what you said, like doing the VietAid piece and bringing in other community organizations as part of the triangle.
Thank you, Dean Coleman.
Great. I know it's getting late, so I don't want to keep you up much later. I know you have a full day tomorrow. But I thank you. This is very exciting work and looking forward to as we go forward. The question I have is your data dashboard, right? I mean, so, you know, a lot of great ideas, a lot of good programmatic ideas, but what really are the, particularly the leading indicators? When you come back in a year, what will we want to see different in your numbers? We'll hear what you do. We're excited about that. But in your numbers, what will we see different? And what are the ones that are priorities for you? And then what are your lagging indicators? So what you've shared with us are the student growth percentiles and they talk about the achievement gap, not broken down by your demographic groups, which I think would be very useful for us to see it. And then the other question I would have, as you think about an answer, is you have an enrollment demographics. Do you anticipate, particularly if you're successful, do you anticipate any change in your demographics? Who's going to be coming to your school? So one, what are your leading indicators that you really in a year, you're going to want to see movement? Two, what are your core lagging indicators? Like what really will be your metric of success? Because in the work you're doing, it may not be improved science scores, right? And then third, do you think if you are successful, that have an impact on the demographics? Because in a city that's gentrifying, one of the things that I worry about is as we improve one school, you know, the kids who are administratively assigned are just going to end up someplace else. So are we really improving schools or just moving our problems around?
Thank you, Dean Coleman. So I'll start and then turn over to Rob and Renee for their specific indicators that they personally look at. One of the features of the turnaround plan structure is that it has built into it measurable annual goals for each of the turnaround practice areas. That's true in both of the turnaround plans. So those benchmarks are transparent to the community or anyone who reads this public turnaround plan. They know what we're measuring ourselves against in those goals. They range everything from things like a graduation rate or specific performance on tests, those kind of things. And some of them are more about how the school functions, like engaging families. It may be things on survey data, either student survey data, family survey data, staff survey data. So there are a wide range of metrics included in the plans themselves that the schools will be holding themselves accountable to and the district will as well. And they are, the ones that are in the plan currently are one-year metrics. So we're not waiting until the end of the turnaround plan three years from now to see how we're doing.
One of the things that we are working on immediately is our attendance rate. What we find is that students have felt that their voices have not been historically heard at the school level. And so we want to reengage students to ensure that they see the value in the project-based learning and the linked learning approach to their teaching and learning experience. So we also want to ensure that students have an opportunity to develop lasting relationships with at least one adult in the building during advisory time. So that's certainly one thing that we would like to build is student leadership, student voice, and also to improve attendance.
I would echo Renee's comments and add that in terms of leading indicators, classroom walkthroughs and the culture and climate that we're seeing and feeling in the building will be really important, especially in those opening few months of the school year. I think we'll get a lot of really important data in that way through our advisory program, but also in terms of the professional development that we're doing with staff and the extent to which we're seeing it translated into classroom instruction and student engagement. I think it'll be really important, leading indicators, before we get to the first round of measurable annual goals at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Great. I want to thank you all for the presentation. I have to admit, I am a, as many people know, I tend to be a cynical Bostonian. And I hear linked learning, and this is an idea from LA, and I kind of roll my eyes and say, well, will that work here? And I was not at the meeting. I've only missed two meetings, I think, in the past couple of years. And I was not at the meeting a while ago when the superintendent had folks present about link learning. And so I was cynical about this idea. But I did have the opportunity to spend time with Principal Rometti and Principal McCall and several other folks in visiting, what did we see, four or five schools in LA over a 36-hour period? And I thought it was crazy to do it, take five-hour flights both ways in 36 hours a couple of weeks before back surgery. And then Principal Headmaster Rometti had kidney stones attack while he was out there. So you were in more pain than I was. But I was, and I want to report to my fellow members, I did it because I wanted to see this in action. And is this something that would really make sense? And to spend time with the leaders who would be implementing it. And I was incredibly struck by the project-based learning that we saw actually happening at the four, I missed one school with you, so I think the four schools that I was at. And I particularly reflect back to the Hollywood STEM Academy and the students we met with, that it wasn't quite what they were saying. It was how, they pulled a half dozen students in to meet with us. And they were so respectful to each other and they were so incredibly articulate and well-spoken about what this project, what this STEM school meant to them. And I equated to Health Career Academies because they had a health focus there in particular. And someone was saying, no, I'm not going to go into this field, but here's what I learned from this school anyway, getting back to your original question, question, Mr. LaCanto. And then we went over with the ninth graders who were presenting that night, a film study on a particular topic, and they had worked together as group, many of which, when we went around and talked to them individually, were very new to the country, English language learners. And yet to see the interaction of the students and how they were presenting, I was incredibly struck by that. And I wanted to ask Headmaster Rometti and Headmaster McCall in particular, you know, did you have any takeaways? Because I know we did have the ability through Superintendent Chang's connections and instructional Superintendent Welsh's connections and others, the access we were given by the school leaders there, they were literally handing you teacher training booklets and templates and giving you complete open access of here's our learning over the past four years to accelerate yours. So did you have any takeaways in that in particular? And any things in particular that you learned from that that you want to implement right away?
So I had so many takeaways. I would say that all of the materials that we acquired certainly will help us, technically speaking, and I think will help us launch this. But the most powerful moment for me was the evening exhibition that we attended of the students doing the group presentations. They did poster board presentations and then presented these film shorts that they had created around different infectious diseases. And I feel like I realized at that moment that the theme was really just a vehicle to really empowering students to develop the skills that we've talked about in this presentation and that several of you have asked about, mentioned, the collaboration, the advocacy, the way in which students were so articulate with one another, the way in which they felt really empowered through that process. And these were freshmen that we had watched. And we were shocked that it was one of their very first exhibitions. We had assumed that they were, you know, several in. And so I thought that that was very powerful. And it really reminded me, or maybe really showed me, what it is we're aiming to do, which is to really empower students, to give them voice, to teach them the sort of skills that they need regardless of the field they go into, to be really successful members of any career or any college that they attend.
I would agree with everything that Rob mentioned. I also wanted to point out that just hearing the student reflections, not only the freshmen, but the upperclassmen, about the experience that linked learning has had on their lives is really powerful. The schools also may mention that their branding and publication was also very important so that students see the importance and the difference that your school can make. And considering that we are a turnaround school, it's great that students will understand that we are reimagining the high school experience and redefining what excellence looks like at Excel and at Brighton. So it's really important that we make an effort to brand and rebrand our schools.
Thank you. It struck me when I saw those students in action. It reminded me of in Boston STEM Week that we have here in all of our middle school grades for one week in October, September. And when a number of us visited the schools, that was the, one of the most engaged that I've seen Boston Public Schools students be engaged in learning something in a project, working together, excited, I mean, thrilled for that week. This is what was happening at these schools we visited every single day. And so it really encouraged me that I could see this working at both of the schools that the superintendent has selected to implement this to begin. There's a lot of work to do. I thank Dr. Yuriyate in particular for pointing out some of the challenges you need to focus on. I think you've heard from all the members on this and we look forward to following your progress. Superintendent, I know you are going to be presenting this to stakeholders group, making final recommendations and then working the state on presenting your turnaround plan. And then we'll be getting updates in the future. Correct. So thank you. You have a lot of hard work in front of you, but you've got a great start underway.
Thank you.
And it's critical for Boston that you succeed. Thank you. We'll move on now to our final report this evening, a charter renewal application for the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. Dr. Karen Walker Gregory, the headmaster, and her team has been patient. We thank you for your patience and welcome you. Superintendent Chang, do you have some opening remarks to make?
Yes, I do. Dr. Karen Walker Gregory, Headmaster at EMK for Healthcare Careers, will present tonight on her school's application to DESI to renew its five-year charter. I think the timing is absolutely appropriate because EMK has been a bright spot in the integration of academics and career technical education and ensuring that young people's learning in school is also relevant to careers. She will be asking for EMK's reauthorization vote on July 19th. As we look to better prepare our students for success in college career and life, EMK has been a bright spot, as I stated. It is a college preparatory high school. It focuses on putting students on a solid pathway to careers in health professions. And it is a model very similar to what you heard about Brian and Excel. I want to thank Dr. Walker Gregory for her continued leadership. And lastly, I do want to say that the EMK community has expressed to me directly their desire to move to a 7-12 grade configuration. I have asked them at this time not to present that because we want to use the Build BPS process to consider such changes. But I want the school committee to know that I want to be supportive of their desire to go, become a 7-12 and to become, and to start educating- to go become a 7-12 and to become, and to start educating students in secondary at a much earlier age. So that will be a conversation for later, but today, this, she's going to be presenting her application for a charter renewal, a Horace Mann charter renewal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, Chairperson Mike O'Neill, Superintendent Chang, and of course, the distinguished members of the Boston School Committee. I want to just recognize my board members here today that have come out and support us. I have Elmer Freeman here, who is not only our board chair, but also the founder of our school and is now the executive director of the Center for Community Health Education and Research and Service. I have on my left here Erica Steves, who's also a board member. He's director of Social Innovation Fund, Success Boston, and the Boston Foundation. And I have Julian Scott, he's also a board member. He's the budget manager at Northeastern University, and so I thank them, all of them for joining me today. So the, again, I'm here to provide you with the highlights, bright spots, as to why the school committee should support the application of the charter renewal of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. I prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation for your review. And so obviously, our mission for our school continues to be the same. We're a college preparatory high school that focuses on the health professions, most recently have become a vocational track. We continue to be a supportive learning environment, and our goal is to attain the life skills needed to become productive and positive members of this society. Just a little brief history of our school. We were founded in 1995. We were designated in 1998 a first Horace Mann charter school. 2003, we had our renewal, and then 2008 and 2013. 2010, we were renamed in honor of the Senator Edward M. Kennedy. 2012, we expanded to two sites. And in 2016, we were the first charter school to receive Chapter 74 fronts in the health professions. Again, our request is to renew our application, and approval will allow EMK to continue operate from July 2018 to 2023. Just a little success, evidence of success, continue to have a graduation rate of 98%. Very low dropout rate. Ninety, seventy, 97% of our kids go to college. More than half of the graduates select the health professions, about 56% at this time. And we continue to have a long waiting list every year. Evidence of success and equity, EMK continues to enroll students regardless of prior academic achievement and serves a population that mirrors the racial, ethnic, and economic diversity of the city. Over the last few years that I've been there, we have significantly increased our enrollment of English language learners and students with disabilities. We, from, for ELL students, we started off with 5.3% in 2011 and have increased to 13.6. IEP students, 9.3 to 16.4, and our enrollment, of course, has grown to 359. We are a Level 2 school. We study, we have steady MCAS results in terms of Grade 10 proficiency rate continues to exceed the BPS in ELA and Science, and are pretty comparable overall for subgroups in math. We continue to have partnerships with Northeastern University and Brigham and Women's, Harvard School of Public Health, and most recently, Vortex Pharmaceuticals. Again, EMK was or is the first charter school to be approved as a Chapter 74 career and technical education program focusing on health assisting, and would love to explore the biotechnology pathway as well in the future. Again, the critical next steps is really just the one we've already approved from our Board of Trustees, approval. We've gotten approval already from the Boston Teachers Union, and we hope to receive approval from the Boston School Committee. And those are just the specific dates. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Walker Gregory. Opened up to questions from members. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you very much. And I see you have some troublemakers on your board. Good for you. I wanted to ask you, like, he's looking at me like, who are you talking about? I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. One is, do you follow the BPS code of conduct?
Yes.
Thank you. And my other question is, if you can talk a little bit, I'm curious about the partnerships that you have beyond the big institutions, the community-based partnerships that you have in Mission Hill and in Roxbury?
Well, we kind of own that whole strip of Huntington Ave. So from Harvard School of Public Health, College of Pharmacy, Harvard Bed, Isabella Stewart.
You have the big institutions.
Yeah.
But do you have any partnerships with some of the community-based organizations? I know you sit right, right across on South Huntington. You have like the Tobin Community Center, Mission Hill Health Movement, all those.
Sociedad Latina. So yes, we do. We have a huge partnership with Tobin Community Center. They're like, we just actually recognize them in our awards ceremony. We use their facility each and every day. They're open and receptive to us, and so we appreciate them very much.
Good. Are you part of the Mission Hill Youth Collaborative by any chance?
Not.
Okay. We'll make you part of the Mission Hill Youth Collaborative. And then I just am curious, I know you have a Northeastern board member, I'm just curious about the space and is that a long-term space? Is that a forever space for you?
Well, I don't.
I'm going to respectfully interrupt there for a second and say that is more of a Build BPS-type question that is under consideration.
Oh, it's under consideration. Okay. I take that question back. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Gregory and gentlemen. Just a couple of quick questions. So first of all, on the Grade 7, 8 expansion, I heard, potential Grade 7, 8 expansion, I heard Dr. Chang's introductory remarks. Just to clarify, you'll need to come back to us with a charter amendment in order to expand the school, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, very good.
With 28 pages of details.
Yes. And as far as the health assisting CTE program, that began this year, correct? And can you give us any highlights from successes, challenges over the first year with that program?
So the best part of the program is it really aligns with some of the work that we've been doing. But what I like about the CTE, it has a curriculum base. It's very specific as to what is to be covered. What is really exciting is that we're going to have the first group in next year to be doing their actual internships at hospitals and doing their, getting their nursing experience. So wonderful, what, I guess this is the beginning stages, so it's all about exposure in ninth and 10th. And so junior year, this group now is actually going to be at the hospitals, and so it's really, they're really excited.
And how will those internships work as far as a calendar is concerned? Will we do week on, week off, like some other CTE programs work?
Well, we haven't done the week on, week off. I think that's the model that Madison Park uses, and so we're not utilizing that model.
What is the model? Or is it yet to be determined?
Well, we're going to be doing it like half-day, right? And so half-day of learning, half-day of internship, half-day of learning, half-day internship. What's great about our schedule now, we're on a 90-minute block, which makes it a little easier for them to come back and get their regular classes as well.
Very good. Well, thanks so much. We look forward to hearing about continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Ms. Robinson.
Yes. I'm impressed with your graduation rate and your dropout prevention rate. What do you attribute to your high rates?
So my focus is not on graduation, my focus is on college. And so we cannot go to college without graduating. So the mindset is, what college are you going to? Graduation's a given. I think we've had some successes where I meet with seniors three times a year, individual meetings, it's about 20 minutes each, and it's about your plans. So one, nobody gets missed through the crack, right? So the beginning of the year, and the middle of the year, and the end of the year. So at the end of the year, it's more like, here are your tickets. And so I think it's really about a mindset. It's really about, graduation is a given. Can't, like, you can't get into so-and-so college. So it, when they first come in the ninth grade, everybody knows, Dr. Walker's asking you, not if you're going to college, what college are you going to?
What does parent engagement look like at your school?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time with parent engagement. We have a parent engagement court, well, I have two staff members that work on that process and work with the district around it. We do a lot of events in terms of Cultural Day and, because it's not just about coming up and getting your report card, it's about trying to build a community. And so we spend a lot of time with, in staff meetings, just brainstorming on different ideas. I think what I find is if your staff does not look like what your kids are in front of you, that will be a challenge. And so I spend a lot of time making sure our school is diverse and that we can communicate.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Uriarte.
Hi. Thank you very much for your presentation and for all the documentation. I wanted, I have some questions about just, I'm not familiar with your school, so just, you know, information. Can you tell me a little bit about the break, you know, the, your enrollment? Who's in your school? What, you know, what percent, you know, the, I mean, in terms of the equity report, you know, what, you know, what percent are English language learners? What percent are SPED students? What, so that we can have an idea of the profile of your school?
So.
Where, I was looking for it, I couldn't find it. Do you have it in here?
So we have it in here in terms of the breakdown of ELL and special ed, but we're 50% African-American and about 50, it's about 50/50 Latino. But our ELL population is about 13.6.
13%.
13, and I SPED is about 16.4%. About 70% of my staff is SPED certified and ELL certified.
Okay.
So that makes a huge difference in trying to service kids.
Okay. And the languages that your kids speak?
Spanish first, Haitian Creole, and Cape Verdean.
Okay.
In that order.
Okay. The other, the other thing, what kind of FCI programs do you have? Or do you have FCI programs?
No, we don't.
How do you handle the 13% of English language learners here?
So the 13% are mostly Level 3s, 4s, and 5s. So we have certified teachers.
So they're integrated in your?
And they're integrated into the classroom.
Okay. And fine, I don't know if you were listening to the previous discussion, I mean, how do you integrate, you know, English language learners into some of the, you know, the practice, apprenticeships that you're, that you're holding?
So I think it really starts off with the quality of staff that I have, right? And the mindset that they have. And so our job is to, again, get them ready for college, whether they're ELL, whether they're SPED. That's the mindset. And so the, training our staff, about, it's about 70% of them are ELL certified, right? And so, again, starting off with the mindset that all kids can learn, and all kids have the opportunity to have access to high-quality education. I think part of the way to make that equitable is student choice. Students get to choose where they want to go.
What they will work on.
Yes. And we do that through a, through a annual survey, and we, again, encourage them before the end of the school year that they take an AP class, one AP class before they graduate. There is also, for my Spanish-speaking students, we do have a AP Spanish class for my 10th grade. Where they've been extremely successful on the AP test. Just try to provide different opportunities to support them in their language and their culture.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Walker Gregory, for your presentation and for your board members who joined this evening and the founder of the school. Thank you. I did want to ask one thing. I noticed in your more detailed write-up, when you talked about ELA, which has been one of the strengths of the school, and I was fascinated by the partnerships that you laid out, the Boston Debate League, the Huntington Theater, the Isabel Stuart Gardner, and then in Science, the partnerships there with Vortex, et cetera. And yet you talked about, quite honestly, about your challenges with math, and that the students are not coming to you in ninth grade with the level of Algebra I that you expected. And so you've been shifting around your teaching. Could you talk about that for a second, please?
Yes. We, as we grow, I think that was one of the reasons that we want to explore the 7th and 8th. We believe that we, if we could get them at 7th and 8th grade, we would be, we would have them better prepared.
You may, you just speak up a little bit louder, thanks.
Sorry. We believe, that was one of the reasons that we were exploring the 7th through 8th in terms of just readiness.
Yep.
Just overall. And if we could start a little earlier, we think the kids would be more college-ready. But in general, we've been playing around with geometry, advanced algebra, algebra. Some kids are coming to us Algebra-ready and some kids are not. And so every, because we're a lottery school and we're not sure what we're going to get each year, we kind of trying to change up based on the.
So you change more to a hybrid model in your math teaching?
Yes.
And are you getting success with that?
Well, you know, each year is different.
That's true. But are you seeing more, I mean, as the district has focused more on trying to have more students Algebra-ready at ninth grade, you're not seeing, I'm seeing the head shake, no. And by the way, the opinion you're expressing, every single high school leader that I've spoken to in this city has said, I would love to get the students earlier. So it is, you were not saying a message that is standalone. I thank you for the presentation. I do happen to know your school fairly well and have been an admirer of what I've seen over the years. And, you know, delighted that the fellow members have seen today and have pointed out, you know, some of the highlights of what is going on at the school. I do know you have some challenges by being in multiple facilities and as you have grown over the years, and, you know, we'll try to figure that out for you. But, you know, the pathways you're providing for our students and, you know, 56% saying they want to be in health careers, that is admirable. I would spend one week in your school and say, I don't want to be in a health career because of blood, but.
Thank you.
Sorry for making a joke of it. You're doing tremendous work for our students, and I thank you, and I thank the board members for attending at this late hour as well. So thank you for being here. Superintendent, it looks like you want to make a comment.
Yes, very quickly, you did not share that you were the number-one school in the district in terms of parent surveys returned.
Yay!
And that's a high school, too, which is makes you.
What is the number? Do we know what the number was?
What was the percentage last year, do you remember?
I think it's like 90, 95.
It was, it was in a, it was in the 90s.
Yeah.
It blew our mind. Congratulations.
Yeah. We hope to break that record again.
You will.
Let's teach that rocket science.
You'll get another nook probably, right?
And I do point out, in accordance, you know, we so often do not reference the fact that in our packages are equity impact statements. And so I do want to specifically, because Mr. Mudd has pointed out to us a number of times, you do not ask about the equity impact. It actually is in all of our packages. And so I do want to specifically mention and call out that it, you buy the fact that you enroll students without regard to prior academic achievement and are lottery-based. You try to have a population that represents a city and, most importantly, have significantly increased enrollments of ELL and students with disabilities over the past few years. I thank you for pointing that out and showing the success with those subgroups as well.
And the 98%.
And the 98% graduation rate as well, so.
97% to college.
And 97% to college. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. You were listening this evening. So thank you, all four of you, for attending this evening. The committee looks. The committee looks forward to taking action on your request at our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on now to public comments and report. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. We have one speaker this evening, Mr. John Mudd.
It's going to begin and end. So real quick, I hope, as with the chair, I think I was the, on the ELL Task Force, I think I was also there before the beginning, you know, talking with Reverend Grover about the formation of the task force initially. I just wanted to quickly take your time and add my voice probably unnecessarily to encourage you to continue to support the task force and to give it the mandate that it needs to do the critically important work that we're all addressing together. The obvious is that we're not going to deal with the achievement gap unless we deal with these students. And we're focusing on a critically important agenda for marginalized people, how we realize the goal of culturally and linguistically supportive practices for a marginalized set of students that have particular cultural and linguistic needs. And I think that's a theme that I hope we can continue to explore with you and the task force. I would just, as a sidebar, since we're now including ELL data in the schools and SPED data in the schools, maybe we could also ask schools to report on ELL SPED students since it is a significant and, you know, important group that we are not yet dealing effectively with. I really think that the task force has, as some people say, been a model in both, and I think the fact that such high-quality people are willing to add themselves to the work of the task force shows, it's testimony both of the quality and momentum of the work that the task force has done. So I hope you will reinforce it, and I know you will. I think I have hoped that the new subcommittee structure, well, we have had subcommittees, but the partnership with BPS entities to develop SMART goals can really, no, that's not my warning yet. Can develop SMART goals will be a very important next step. I mean, that means that all of us have to come to that table in a way willing to, you know, committed to looking at these tough problems and in some sense, willing to take risks and be open with each other. And I hope we can do that, have faith we can, under this leadership. There are going to be three hugely important contextual issues that we face, and they've been mentioned here. The student assignment question about what is necessary in terms of grouping of students to give them the program support that they need, and what are the issues involved in that, not least of which being Department of Justice. Secondly, the critical importance of interdepartmental collaboration, you know, that to deal with the complex issues. I know I've worked on hiring. That's got to be not just Office of Human Capital, but the academic departments and schools. And finally, sorry, finally, this issue of central leadership and school implementation, you know, because we have a decentralized system, but not a balkanized system. So how we hold principals accountable and provide them the support first, and then hold them accountable. To my knowledge, and I'm sorry, to my knowledge, the hiring of teachers and engagement of parents is not one of the key variables that principals are held accountable for. And if you can be a proficient principal without dealing with parent engagement or hiring of diverse staff, then I don't think we're addressing that quickly. Thank you for indulging me over time.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. That concludes our speakers this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. New business? Hearing none. That concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, July 19th at 6:00 p.m. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's a motion. There's a second. It certainly looks like unanimous consent. Thank you, everybody, and have a restful summer evening. I'm glad, on the longest day of the year, we did not have the longest school committee meeting of the year.
Thank you.
It's still dark outside.
We still didn't make it out before the turn.
It actually sat through the whole thing. The first time in months, right?